April tenth, two thousand two twenty twenty-three, town of Cape Creek, Arizona, regular town council meeting. This meeting was delayed by about eight days so that we could finish up the budget work and have our first crack at next year's budget.
Your microphone on?
I think so, yeah.
Can you hear it? No, she's chattering. Okay.
Are we good? Okay, yeah, it sounds like it's working now. So the rough schedule is that we have to sometime in May approve this, and there's three or four meetings between now and then. This one here is without public comment. The meeting next week is with Thursday the thirteenth, excuse me.
Mr. Mayor, because we moved this regular meeting to this state, we left the public comment on there. But we, at your, at your, it's your decision, but I would request that the comments be after the conversation between all the council members and staff and all of the presentations, if that's okay.
That works. So with that, we will do the pledge of allegiance. Roll call. Sound vocals. Bruce. Pledge of allegiance, please.
We just in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Say something?
Well, I was just gonna say, I do have some things for manager comments when you get there.
I don't have any public announcements myself. Anybody on council have a public announcement they'd like to contribute?
I, I bet it's globe camera view.
Yeah.
You take it.
For folks online, if you take a look at the stink net right now, you'll see the pretty yellow flowers are still there, but the bottom half is turning brown, which means it's a danger.
You know, it's, this, this is an invasive species. When the seeds have been spread, it's like matchsticks that are sticking up in your yard. So hopefully, we will avoid what we saw a couple of years ago. Thank you, Ernie.
Okay, call the public.
No members wish you to speak?
And I would add to that, if I may, that the last two fires that we had, I became aware of what happened, and it was people doing things that they knew they shouldn't be doing. So please think about the, what you're doing on your property, because it doesn't take much to start a fire, and they cause big damages. Okay, thank you.
Go call the public. So at this point, we're at the town manager's report.
So following up on, on that issue with the stink net, there will be two free drop-off opportunities with the county in April, April twenty-second and April twenty-ninth, to drop off your brush, your green waste. And the last Saturday, the town held their last brush drop-off for this season. So the, these are the next two, but you go directly to Mayor Copa County on Carefree Highway, three nine five five East Carefree Highway, and they are open from seven AM to three PM. The other, thank you, I would like to acknowledge Desert Foothills Landscape for allowing us to borrow their chipper, since our chipper has been down for both of the brush-off drop, brush drop-off events. The Public Works Crew will be out starting their mowing cycle to, along the major corridors in town to take out the weeds as well. This is the season for them to start their mowing cycle. That's all on stink net. I want to remind everyone that tomorrow, five PM, there is a ribbon-cutting ceremony, recognizing the acquisition of the thirty-plus acres of open space, and the event will be out in the Spurcross parking lot. And lastly, we completed our ISO rating. It's actually referred to as Verisk, and the town did very well in that rating process. We will improve our grading from a four and go up to a three. And that's pretty darn good. It'll help us with insurance ratings. So I think it's within five miles of the station, right? So we'll improve their rating if you're within five miles of a fire station. So that's good news for the town.
Would you, what is the time for the Spurcross ribbon-cutting?
Five PM, yes.
Five PM, thank you. Okay, the action item tonight is the presentation of town council, followed by council discussion of town of Cape Creek draft for fiscal year 2024 budget presented by the town manager.
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to just give an overview of how the, the work sessions are structured. And so initially, we're going to give some overview of how the budget was put together, what is in it, what some assumptions are. Mitzi has a PowerPoint to kind of follow through on that and take any questions you might have at that time. And then we're going to the, the general fund summary. She's going to go through the revenues and the expenditures, all of the transfers in and out, the one-time sources, the ending balance, and what that all means and defines. So you understand clearly what the fund balance is, what's in it, your assets and your liabilities. And and then at the very end, there's a section on, on the side. So we want to make sure that you understand that detail before we go into the general fund budgets. We will go through each budget one by one. The directors are here, those that are available are here, and we will give an overview of each department, what is in the department budget. And then, and then the departments can, department directors can answer any questions that you may have something more specific, if we haven't answered your question. And from there, we will cover the special revenue funds. There are a couple of capital projects. And then we go into the enterprise funds, the wastewater, Cape Creek water, and desert hills. And then, and, and each step along the way, the council and the staff can have a dialogue. We can talk about what's in there, things you'd like to see in there, and, you know, just have a conversation about that. And if you want to make any adjustments, there seems to be consensus or small things or big things, whatever you want to do, we can add those in, we can take something away or make some adjustments. Typically, if there doesn't appear to be consensus, we've set that aside. We come back with the changes at the next work session, which will be Thursday at three PM. We'll make all the changes that you've requested. And then you'll have an opportunity then to go back and look at those. And if there are any other additional things to talk to as you work through the whole budget so that you're all comfortable. And occasionally, we have some things that there isn't necessarily a consensus, and those could get all the way to the tentative budget approval, and the council members then can have motions to amend the tentative budget by adding something or taking away. So there's, there's quite a, a good opportunity to have a discussion and make changes. Tonight, Thursday, from three to, to whenever starts at three o'clock, this will be on the regular meeting, council meeting on May first as well. So there's a third opportunity, and all three nights we have public comment. And then the second meeting in May will be when we have a public hearing and tentative budget approval. And again, if there's anything left to resolve, that's when you can have motions to amend the budget, to put things in, take it out, and then adopt the tentative budget. The final budget approval then comes by resolution in June. That's the, it's a long process, but it gives plenty of opportunity to have a conversation, work out any details that you'd like to see changed in the budget. Any questions on that? Otherwise, we'll go over to Mitzi, and Mitzi's got a PowerPoint, just gonna kind of go over the assumptions and some general information about the budget and then go into the general fund.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Okay, okay. So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. You were given these eleven-by-seventeen printouts as part of your council packet. And I wanted to start by going over some of the formatting on these forms to define kind of what you're looking at to ensure you guys understand and everyone understands what's being presented on these. So some of these listed here for you too. But in the fiscal year twenty-four budget, we have broken out operating expenditures separately from the capital expenditures. Second, the change column that's listed on, on the forms have been broken out separately or have been presented as the difference between the fiscal year twenty-three projected actuals and the fiscal year twenty-four proposed budget columns. That's what represents the change.
I have a request. Can we add a column that shows the difference between the FY twenty-three budget and the FY twenty-four proposed budget? Typically, the way that I've seen budgeting in the past, it just makes it easier. I know what the actuals come in, and Arizona does it differently. But there's two change, there's two things. One of them is year-over-year, what we're asking for.
Right.
The other one is, what did we get versus what did we, what did we do with it? Does that make sense?
Sure. Mayor, council member, actually, we've typically done budget to budget, and there, and then we've changed that this year to do the estimated to budget, but we could add a column, and then you'll see both.
Yeah.
But the percent.
Easier, it's for, for some of us who've been doing budgeting for a number of years, it's just easier for us to see the year-over-year budget.
Sure, we, we could add that. Um, okay, so, but what's presented on these forums here tonight, though, I just wanted to make clear, are the difference between our estimated actuals and the fiscal year twenty-four budget is what's shown in that change column. Um, and these are different. I had had that in my notes here too. These were different than what we've done in the past, because in the past, it's been budget to budget. So.
Right, I went through last year's budget, that's why I asked the question.
And this is, this is a change this year, which is why we're pointing it out.
Since I'm with one behind, putting this to actual, it's because it's, you're comparing two fairy numbers because of the, all of the numbers in there. I was never able to get an idea of the operating performance of the town, the financial performance, and that, that's.
I think that's, I think it's a good idea. I just think we ought to have one more column in there that, that says, here's what we projected. Here's what.
Yeah, I'm taking responsibility for the change.
No, I, it's a good change. I, I agree with the change. What I, what I, would help me, because I'm tracking from last year's budget and seeing what we had last year, we're we're good.
Okay. Yeah, and you, you will also want to see the percentage change then too, right? So two, two more columns, basically. Okay, yes, we can, I'll make a note, and we can add that, add that in. The the next thing I wanted to point out then is the percentage change column, which is the, the final column on, on the budget forms, is the difference then between, it takes the change, the amount of the change divided by the fiscal year twenty-three projected actual column. That's how you determine the percentage change. That's been noted in the heading. It's shown up here on the slide in the green boxes. And then the final formatting change or presentation up here is the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed call, proposed budget column has been highlighted in gray to, for, for easy reference for you guys, so you can see what it is that we're, we're referring to. Behind the detailed budget is several summary tables that will be shown for you. The first one that will be reflected under there is an expenditure by use, which will show just a summary for each department in the total personnel costs, contracts and services, commodities, and you'll have your total operating expenses shown. You'll have a total for capital, and then the bottom gray line is the total for the department. And you'll see the same column, those totals for the same column headings shown there. The next summary table is a capital expenditure by project table. This summary table reflects the fiscal year twenty-four capital projects that have been identified in the budget for appropriation. And that total, the total, it'll show the different project titles and the amount for each project, and the total of that table agrees to the, will agree to the capital expenditure section in the department budget. The next summary table is an authorized position table, and it shows for each department on the left, the positions for each department, and then it's got the fiscal years across the top. But the, the final column on the right is where we are for fiscal year twenty-four.
When you have changes, like somebody moves from, a position moves from one to another department, could you put a note somewhere that says this position moved?
For, you mean for the, the current fiscal year? And it changes from twenty-three to twenty-four?
Just put it on the, the twenty-four side. This person moved for, this position moved from here to here. Because I, I was tracking the positions and, and like, we had four tenths of a person working for Cary. It's no longer working for Cary. So just where did that person go? Or did it go?
We're, we're gonna cover that as we get into each department. It'll, we rolled, that's part of, part of our presentation. We rolled up some of those personnel costs, because it was a lot, ten percent here and there, and, and a lot for payroll for not really, there was no reason to really do that, so.
Okay. And then for each fund, there is also a fund summary table that is presented, and it shows the revenues, expenditures, and beginning and any fund balance for each of the funds. So we'll be running through those summaries as well. And then at the very back of your packet, you will find the capital project by funding source pages for the fiscal year twenty-four through twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program that's been included for your reference. The fiscal year twenty-two four project column of our CIP plan has been included in this proposed budget that's in front of you today for the departments. Okay, any questions on the formatting comments? Okay, so the next thing that I wanted to cover is the town's financial policies. The financial policy one requires a contingency to provide necessary cash for emergencies and/or unanticipated expenses, and if not used, will maintain a minimum cash or fund balance for the next fiscal year. This contingency is required for the general fund, her fund, and the wastewater fund. The general fund requires a contingency of ten percent of the sales taxes and state shared revenues. Herf is ten percent of the state shared revenues that it receives, and the wastewater fund is ten percent of the state tax and state shared revenues that the wastewater fund receives. A contingency amount was not designated in the wastewater fund for fiscal year twenty-two four. When we get there, you'll see that. And we did not designate a contingency for that fund this year because a transfer was required. It was in the red. The wastewater fund ended up in the red, so it required a transfer from the general fund to balance that fund for fiscal year twenty-four. And so to establish a contingency would just require additional general fund cash to do that. So it was not made for fiscal year twenty-four. The town financial policy number two requires for the general fund to maintain a three-month operating, three months of operating expenditures as a reserve that is not restricted in any way for any other purpose. It's for fiscal year twenty-four, the amount in the general fund that has been designated for this operating reserve is two million five ninety-three, two oh three, and we'll see that when we go through the general fund summary. I'll point that out. Any questions on either of the financial policies that we have? Okay, so we're gonna move into the general fund. And I guess I will start by just defining what the general fund is for everybody, but it is the general operating fund of the town, and it accounts for all financial resources except those required to be accounted for in the other funds. So specifically, enterprise funds are accounted for separately. The revenues and expenditures for those funds are maintained in their individual funds themselves. We've got special revenue funds, which are things like Herf and Spurcross and open space and those types of things where they're accounted for separately. Everything else of the general government is accounted for here in the general fund. And we're gonna first start by going through the general fund summary, which was the first eleven-by-seventeen page in your, your, your handout, your packet. And I wanted to start by running through the format of the summary here. So we start here with the operating revenues of the town, which include local taxes, local fees, state shared revenues, miscellaneous revenues. And the fiscal year twenty-two column, that's the first one shown, shows our actuals, where we actually ended up for fiscal year twenty-two. These are audited numbers, audited by our external auditors. And the next column is the fiscal year twenty-three budget, and then we've got actuals when we started, where we were when we started putting the budget together at the end of January of twenty-three. The next column would be projected actuals. Next column is our proposed budget, and then our change and percent change columns at the end. So we'll, I'll walk you through here, just the setup first, but operating revenues are, again, our local taxes, local fees, state shared revenue, and any miscellaneous revenue. The next set of area there is operating expenditures by department. This reflects in total what our expenditures are for town manager, administration, legal services, development services, court, public safety, law enforcement, public safety, fire and emergency, finance, town council, public works, and special events. Those departments are our general fund departments.
See, I have a question right, right to start there. The, the local tax, we underestimated last year by six, maybe eight percent, something like that, or eight percent higher than we have. I, I believe I saw somewhere, yeah, on the revenues, that there's, it just made only a one percent increase in local sales tax. The general economy is increasing. Inflation is six to ten percent. The food is ten, and we have a lot of food revenues coming in. So why is the one percent rather than six, eight, or ten percent estimated revenue from sales taxes?
We, we estimated the one percent increase based off the fiscal year, what we projected our actuals to be at the end of the year, not off of the proposed budget from last year. I mean, I know you said we, we didn't meet our target, but we estimated that increased on where we actually end up, expecting to end up at the end of the fiscal year. And on revenues, we do always take a conservative approach on our revenue side, just to ensure that we're not overshooting our, our target.
Okay, I, I just think that's way too conservative. I, I, it may be. I mean, I, one thing that's, that's not broken out of there that I wish was, was the local tax also includes construction tax. That is a lot more volatile than Walmart or Sprouts or those.
The construction, sales tax is part of the one-time sources and uses there at the bottom.
Nice, good. Having, that's a great way to do it. So that, that really is.
That's what, for our operating revenues, that's what we.
Well, tell me what the advantage is in, what I perceive as maybe an underestimation. Why, why does, why does that, why is that a good policy to have it so unusually low?
The the revenues, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, for our operating revenues, this is where we are, I mean, based on our conservative approach, that's just where we estimated that coming, ending at.
Just a little bit of history, we used to estimate based on the budget, budget, because it always came in higher than the budget. So you would estimate, like, say, ten percent of, of the current year's budget would be next year's, but then what, whatever that percentage, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what it was, but instead of estimating from the budgeted number, it's, it's a truer number by estimating from our projected actuals. So the percentage is down. It used to be higher percentage, but it was off the budget, not the actuals.
Well, it's still like, what's the advantage to underestimating tax revenues? Why?
You mean, why underestimate versus overestimate?
I'm seeing here a history of underestimation, and we have another year where we're one percent increase over what we have now. We've got eight or ten percent inflation. We have new businesses. We have businesses opening up. I mean, it just doesn't seem to make any sense.
I, I understand very common from now, sorry, Mayor. We do not budget for estimated revenues from future businesses that have not opened. Once, for example, Sprouts opened in February of the, whatever year it was, two years ago, three years ago. We do not include revenues from future sources, even though we know they're under construction. We don't put them in the budget. We, so those are extra. At some point, we're not gonna have new revenues. So it's just a habit of knowing what your revenues are and projecting off the, the actual revenues versus calculating what might come in on, oh, it's opening up in September, and it might not open till January or something like that. So that's part of it.
We, we, you have a projected, projected actual of seven point eight million dollars, and you're, you're going to seven point nine million when inflation's been six to ten percent. I, I just don't, I, I just, I'm trying to find a reason to do it that, forgetting about the new businesses. But that's, that's fine. That's another, even another conservative factor, but just the businesses that were open that are in the projected actuals we see right here. Why are we not including a reasonable inflation number?
That's what's gonna happen. Which is why we have higher revenues to begin with, because during COVID, we have the two.
The federal government provides an annual inflation number, which, which they lay out. Why can't we just say we're gonna use half or whatever that number is, and then use that as the factor?
It said that we could.
And I think that gets.
One percent, right? It came out at ten point one percent for food. So we could use half of the ten.
I, I won't do anything that makes sense, but I'm trying to stand, what is the, what is the rationale to underestimating the inflation number? Which we have the history of doing, and we have only one percent. What is the benefit?
I, I think there's also, just when we're projecting out to the future like that too, there's also the uncertainty that a recession could hit. I mean, I know people still need food and go out, you know, purchase stuff to get. But there's, there's other factors out there too that kind of.
Well, I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
Like to take a look at that. I think that's too low. I think if, if I'm reading this right, we're talking about pulling down three point one million dollar at the bottom down there, general fund, that's a lot of money. And I, I'd rather be, be accurate in this myself, because we have, we have needs in town that need to be funded. So.
Okay.
If, if, if I may. Mitzi, is, is it standard operating procedure that funding for towns is underestimated? So that should it come in, we've got the money. Should it not come in, we are prepared.
Where?
Is that fair to say?
That's fair.
And that's, and that's what towns generally do.
Correct.
Yeah, this is a government procedure.
We don't usually overestimate revenues, we underestimate revenues in case we don't meet our target and then end up.
Are, are other towns using similarly low numbers? You know?
I, I don't know specifically, because a lot of those haven't been published yet. But yeah, that is the, the general trend.
Now, we, we also have about twenty million dollars in the bank. How much of that twenty million dollars is accessible, the amount that is not encumbered by being held, held back for the WIFF funds, with loans?
Um, I'm going to get to the fund balance piece as we go through the rest of this.
Yeah, I'm trying to answer this question here, though, is we have other places to get money. If we happen to come in a little low, we've got a lot of money in the bank.
There, there is, we do have fund balance, unrestricted fund balance that is available to be, to be used. I mean, the, the town is in a healthy financial state. Position. Okay.
What a team.
Okay, so I'm back to the general fund summary then. The operating expenditures by department then are, are listed there. The next section are operating transfers in and out. And then we have one time sources and uses of funds. This includes our one time expenditures, not part of regular operating. Construction related revenues are listed here. Our capital expenditures are also listed here and any transfers, one time transfers out as well as our contingency that's set aside as part of our financial policy. Then we have the net change in fund balance. That is shown and our fund balance section here at the bottom that shows our, what, what are changing fund balances and added or deducted from our beginning fund balance to end with our ending fund balance for the year. And then on the bottom side of the fund balance is our operating reserve per our other financial policy, that's our three months of operating expense that's been set aside. And that brings us down to our unassigned fund balance. So if we run through these.
So I have a question on that. Where is the WIFF loan stuff? What, what part is that set aside?
The WIFF, we do not have any WIFF loans in the general fund, so you'll see those reserves set aside.
Okay, so as, as we read this, per, per the mayor's question, we apparently have twenty six million, six hundred and seventy three thousand, four hundred and sixty five dollars. That's projected at the end of this year, right? Very bottom. And your FY twenty three projected actual, so we've roughly got twenty six point eight million dollars in the bank.
Correct. The, the, it's the twenty six, three, twenty seven, one, sixty four, of which that amount though, three months of operating reserves have been set aside.
Understand, understand. But so essentially, there's around twenty million dollars that's available.
Correct.
But, but we, but the, the WIFF, the WIFF loans on the utilities are guaranteed by funds that are in the general fund. It's, it's not, it's not clean. So some of that money in the general fund is not available because it backs up the WIFF.
Could, could we add a line then to add the, you know, what the WIFF requirement is?
Yeah. Um, the, the WIFF, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what you're, what you're saying. The WIFF reserves are set aside in the enterprise funds. And you're saying those have been funded by general fund bunnies?
Yes, yes. Yeah, the, the, the general fund was used to guarantee payment of the WIFF loans, which is funky, in my view. But that's the way it is.
So when those reserves get released, then those reserves would revert back to the general fund.
The twenty million bucks, we can't spend all of it, because part of that is a reserve required by the WIFF loans. And what I'm looking for is what is the net amount that we have that we could pull our checking account down, still meet the WIFF fund?
The, yeah, the reserves though are not sitting in the general fund. So that's.
Not included in this number.
Right.
That's sitting and you'll see it in the enterprise fund. And if they get released, that goes off the books and back in the general fund.
They're restricted and held in enterprise funds.
So this is money that's available to spend.
Yeah, and I've got a slide here. And that kind of explains the fund balance piece, because I think this gets a little bit confusing. But fund balance is, you know, assets less our liabilities is what is sitting in fund balance. Are the assets that are sitting there, the majority of it is cash and cash equivalents. But there's also money that's sitting in there that represents accounts receivable due from other governments, lease receivable, due from other funds amounts and some of our prepaid items. So some of, like I said, the majority of, of what's sitting in assets is cash and cash equivalents. Then if we subtract out our liabilities, those are accounts payable, what we are vendors, accrued payroll, what we are employees and some deposits that the town has. So if you take assets minus our liabilities, that's what's sitting in that twenty six million, three, twenty seven, one, sixty four in fund balance for fiscal year twenty four. Of which all of it cannot be spent, because we have some reserves and stuff that need to be set aside. Okay. And so did you want me to run through, are you guys clear with this general fund summary? You want me to run through the, the columns? Or actuals?
No, I just like those two columns added across the board.
Okay. Okay.
Is there a couple down, down this end?
That's clear. Yeah, good, okay. Okay. All right.
So we'll go through each department's budget in order of how it, it's set up in the accounting and, and presented in the, in the budget book. So in the, the town manager budget, you'll see at the bottom authorized positions where fiscal year twenty three had these kind of pieces of other, other positions that have been moved into administration. There was, there was no real meaningful reasons. So if you're looking fiscal year twenty three under the town manager, at the very bottom category, there's like a little box there, authorized positions. So it shows the town manager and all the pieces of communication specialist, compliance. This, the big sheet.
It's on there.
Yeah, it is. It's, that's just down here. They're all in there. So town manager and then there's no longer administrative assistant, the communication specialist, HR compliance specialist, which is the deputy town clerk, that's slightly different name, you'll see in administration. Are under the administration budget and the management analyst was like point oh five from the utilities and it really wasn't necessary. There's no revenue source that ties to those funds. And for payroll purposes, it was just a nightmare with all of these allocations. So you will see across the board more of a roll up of the, the payroll percentages into one or a couple departments. You see the breakout more in like enterprise fund where they have to allocate because they're separate funds. So Cave Creek and Desert Hills Water Systems and Wastewater must report their allocation separately, because they have separate revenues that tie to those budgets. But in the general fund, it's all one fund. And within the departments, there, there was really no need to have that much kind of detail for the payroll breakout. And under the town manager's budget, there is proposed the nine thousand dollars for professional services is for contractual. We used it this year as a portion of the payment towards the strategic plan consultant. And we keep nine thousand dollars in there for any additional consulting that comes up throughout the year. It's not designated at this time. Any questions on it?
Do we have to have that finalized before we do the goals and objectives and things? Recall us finalizing.
No, we do not have a designation for every single dollar in the budget. We have estimates of what we've traditionally used. And so as we go through it, every department director can tell you what is specifically designated and what is in there as sort of a placeholder, because we usually have things that come up.
I'm talking about the strategic plan, you have strategic goal governance, for instance, and then you have things underneath it.
Oh, oh, yes, we, we will, we will finalize that before final budget adoption, yeah.
All right. So, so maybe I'm going to ask the same question a little differently. When I look at the strategic goal community culture, it's one of the statements there is enhance our unique Western community and preserve the natural desert landscape. And I don't see a budget item for either of those. Unless I'm missing it.
The actual descriptions by the departments will have to be updated as a strategic plan gets finalized, so that we know that council's goals, so our activities are specifically to meet the council's goals.
So, so we'll see that, what, on Thursday? Where, where is that in the schedule?
That is a separate agenda item that's coming forward. What's, I don't know what the date is on it. Yeah, probably May, I, I don't have, I don't know.
I might ask that question again as we go along here, right?
Yeah. But that, that would, that was, these are the old goals and the objectives then were citizen knowledge awareness of the town hosting an informational public forum. And that is also one of the objectives in the new draft. So we kept that in there and conducting survey, that, that is the plan to do the survey. So that's in here. And, and the, well, it is part of the town manager, but it's actually budgeted in administration. So you'll, you'll see that dollar amount there. And then, anything on the financial viability and governance? You'll see it both here and in finance, the finance department and the GFOA certificate of achievement. And our, the audit has been moved to the, the town council budget in terms of cost and authority, but the town manager and the staff still have to pass audit. We have the internal controls and things that we have to do. And then we are looking to establish some new revenues in fiscal year twenty two. So, but they don't necessarily have a dollar amount associated with every single objective that's in, in the, in the budget.
Well, when we use words like outreach, that takes energy and their costs. So I'm just, that's.
Well, the cost was, is staff time. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, onto administration, this is another.
No, there's, there's a question.
Going along with what the council member Alkma said, maybe you could identify the number of staff hours or whatever that, you know, when you talk about total outreaches.
We, we could do that, but we have to finalize those goals and the objectives from the town council. And then once that's fine tuned a little bit, we can, you know, put a little meat to the, to the objectives. If that's a priority for council, the hours go up. If, if something else goes down on the list, that, that's the prioritization schedule. And the, not only the prioritization of the goals, but the prioritization of the schedule within the goals. So there's, there's always going to be a schedule and then something's a priority, we're going to use most hours there and we'll get to the other things and use more hours down there when we get to it. So we'll, we'll get there. A lot of pieces to the puzzle.
I have a question in, in this. We have a process for evaluating our town manager. Should our town manager exceed expectations? Do we have the ability to reflect that in terms of the town manager salary?
That, we, we need to talk about overall salaries in general. We didn't cover that in the, do you want to talk about that now or you want to go through?
Yes, expenditures by use, I see personnel, but if that comes up later, that's fine.
Well, it affects the whole budget for everybody. So we could, we could cover that now, step back.
Yeah, it doesn't matter as long as it's there.
Mayor, your pleasure.
No, good. Yeah.
So the budget contains an overall six percent salary, well, equivalent to salary adjustment. That doesn't necessarily mean it's, everybody has six percent and it goes on in perpetuity. So there's, that's a dollar amount in the budget right now. And that's always subject to review and discussion and the method and the manner in which there are salary increases, whether it's a one time cost or through merit or an ongoing market adjustment. And there's actually two pieces of it. There's, there's the dollar amount and then there's adjusting the ranges. So there's actually two pieces that would have to come to council. And so we put in six percent, the Phoenix metro region CPI came in at eight point five. And so we looked around at what other communities are doing. The, we don't have all of the, the valley communities, but we compete with the valley. And we know what is happening in the market since COVID, there are things that changed. And people are very selective about where they work, how they work. And so we've recruited on that, because we are in a unique location where we're kind of far away in any direction. They don't come from all around, they're coming from the west, or they're coming from the south. And most recently, we were fortunate to have someone come from the east, a couple of people. So what we have so far is some data of what is happening in communities around us. Scottsdale had, some of the bigger cities, first of all, do regular comp and class studies, like they have internal people, so they just keep up on it. They don't have to go out and get a consultant. And when we get to administration, you're going to see that we have a comp, a class professional service consultant budgeted for, because the last one we did was in two thousand and nineteen. That was before COVID and a lot of things have changed. Things have changed in the market, things have changed with the number of people available to work in government either, and particularly those that need certain criteria. Their technical people, the utilities that need a certain. A certain kind of certificate in order to operate the water wastewater plants and they're not available. And so everyone is scrambling to hire from the same small pool. And we've lost people. We've lost three utility workers to Glendale. We've lost three and soon to be four over the past year, public works workers. Because they go somewhere else where they can get instead of twenty seven dollars an hour, they're getting twenty eight. That's a big increase when you're a public works worker and making twenty seven dollars an hour. Some of the other communities. Offered our utility workers like a dollar more and you wouldn't think it's much, but then they started their sign on bonuses with two thousand dollars. And we lost all three of those to the city of Glendale. Glendale. Is proposing six point five percent salary increase and it's been out there for a while. We lost these folks. Recently, and so they may have known what was coming down the pipe. And then they're giving an additional up to two, two and a half percent merit. Scottsdale, I believe, has their comp and class study. Up to date, so they are doing a five percent merit and. They're doing a two percent market adjustment to moving their ranges so that their ranges. If there you're hiring people at a higher wage now and they're often towards the top of the range. So they want to keep that range moving, so they have somewhere to grow. Chandler did a comp study and they increased three percent in January. I didn't have the information for what they did last year. Sedona was another one recruiting some of our other technical staff. They, their wages were higher for. Some of the staff that they were trying to recruit and we were able to. Counteroffer and we were fortunate to keep two employees. And they're having a four point five percent increase for all their employees July one. And plus they're increasing, they're doing a five percent increase to their salary ranges. So they're moving those up as well. Phoenix just came out with their new salaries and salary. Percentages. And that's another area in particularly in utilities. Where folks are looking, they had had a two percent. Adjustment of their base salary in a one time payout to all of their employees on April seven. They are doing another five point three one percent annual salary. Which will become an ongoing wage increase for all of their employees. Now they have unions, so it doesn't include the unions that are all negotiated separately. We're talking about the non-union folks. And then, so they're doing that in July, so they get a, they got their two percent one time payout. Based on their base salary, they get five point three one percent annual salary ongoing. That goes into effect in July. And in August, they all get another five percent of base salary one time payout. In Wickenburg. They just completed their comp and class study. And so based on that study they had, they implemented an increase of one point two five percent. For each person for each year in that position up to the midpoint. And the town manager told me that every employee received a minimum at least six percent increase. And that is a, that their overall increase of their salary budget was ten percent. Their council chose rather than to wait for the new fiscal year, they chose to make it effective April eighth. So they've received their their increases. And they had a six percent increase in last year's budget as well. Overall, so that's just some general information that we've gathered so far. You know, everybody's kind of in in the works. I was trying to get some some of the other smaller communities, but. That's just what we have so far. So there's options, but the money is in the budget for council. We can have a conversation on. What do we want to do? We we have the comp study that's budgeted for. We need to move on that, but that's gonna take some time. To come back and implement. You could look at one time. Base salary. You know, percentage that go out and then you can look at, well, do you want to do some of that? And then later you do. A market adjustment to the base salaries or how you want to do it. So there'll be options. That's all I have right now.
It's plenty.
There's a lot going on. There's a lot of pieces and parts and they're moving. It's hard to compare apples to apples. Because small communities are wearing lots of hats and. Let me just, I can go back to utilities over and over. People leave utilities because they can have it easy somewhere else because they're big. They got lots of supervisors. The supervisors aren't also the operators. They are. They have their shift and they can go home. They don't need a lot of overtime, but here we, that's just not how we operate. You have a lot of time invested in working for the town. You just do. And that's because you're a small staff and when people take vacation, somebody's got to cover. And we just don't have enough staff to be able to just you do your. Your regular forty hours a week and go home. We got a lot of people. Who work overtime and then everybody else, just about everybody is salaried from the directors. We only have a handful of hourly people at town hall. You know, maybe six people who are hourly, I mean, off the top of my head. So. After COVID, people have chosen. That they want to work life balance and it's hard to get people to be that dedicated to be here, work that many hours. That's the bottom line, really. So I can't add anymore. That's about it.
So you, have you been making changes in the past to deal with the utility worker?
Yes, we counter offered on the folks that left and they left. It wasn't just the money. It was the hours they're working. We were successful in counter offering for two people who are now in the new development services. Over the last year, year and a half.
So it sounds like there's exceptionally high turnover.
In utilities.
In utilities.
Well, public works was unusual too, because we were, we had a good spell there for a while. We were going along and then all of a sudden. This last year, they had a turnover. Public Works has always had turnover and we tried to deal with that in the last compensation study. We we brought the ranges up because we were losing them to utilities. Every time there was an opening in utilities. So we we kind of brought that public works up. They got extra funding. The range went up so that they were closer. And we're still losing. They go, they we have two that went to APS. You can't beat APS. I'm sorry. It's a good organization to work for and they pay more. So.
Well, it sounds like we've got an ongoing problem.
Yeah.
We don't exact, we don't have the right solution yet.
We don't, but there's.
So you're estimating that that's six percent will cover that?
We're hoping we do. Reasonable. We had six percent in last year and it's. Eight point five in the the CPI for Phoenix, you know, metro region. It gets us in the ballpark. It gives us a number to work with and and if we get a good comp study done. We could phase things in and look to to keep up with. Everybody else basically who are competitors are.
Well, of course, the one that's the most critical from my view is is the utility workers that require these licenses.
Yes.
That are rare and take a long time to to achieve that. That's if you had to pick an area to. You want to make a lot of success, that would be the one.
And and we've had. Difficulty hiring even. I mean, not that even when you get someone, then they interview and they see how much work it is compared to a big city. I'm not sure I want to invest that much.
You might want to set us, you might want to set aside, you got six percent now that you talked about, set aside another two and a half percent. And that doesn't get used until the comp study comes back.
That's, I got to a great idea.
That is, we'll do that.
I I, you know, I, I take my dog to park down the road down here where the soccer fields are. Down off near Tatum. And invariably, there's three city of Phoenix trucks in there, sitting there, I guess, or asleep in their truck. Anyway. Yeah, I think you're working people with them. Okay.
Anyway, okay.
We can work, we can reserve for later.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. So for the administration budget. Go through and then if you have questions, please let me know as we go along. Our advertising fund is for all our legal ads that are required per seat law. Ordinances, elections, things like that. Then in our professional services fund, we have our code supplements. Along with the additional funds for the compensation study for this year. So telephones include all phones and internet town hall as well as all general fund cell phones. Our non-professional services include our contracts for elections. Our county contracts for animal control and as well. And then our insurance covers again, general fund only, which is about fifty four percent. Is the cost of our annual automobile liability inland marine and property and umbrella insurance. The remaining portion is covered under utilities and then and we do plan. Year over year, a ten percent increase. Postage and our copier covers our, especially like our newsletter expenses and our copier equipment. Our supplies fund cup covers our our office supplies purchased for all the general fund departments. Any questions on administration? I was covering trying to cover the higher end ones there. I'll move on to information technology. So in our web hosting fund, that includes our town website. We will be doing upgrades this year. Our business licensing software and agenda management as well as our proposed short term rental system. Professional services includes all our outside computer network support. The funds there, some funds got moved around so that they're in the correct, under the correct funding source. So so you'll see some changes that moved out of other. They could be moved out as other departments or as you see here, they were just moved from professional services to computer software.
Could could we increase the amount of money for the webpage? Because our webpage is extremely hard to navigate.
Okay. So we are contracted with our website allows for a change over this year. So I'm not sure I can, how much are you thinking as far as increase?
Well, right now, what do you have? You have thirty thousand for the web hosting and you have sixty five. Well, no, I'm sorry, you have sixty thousand for the professional services? No.
Web hosting is at fifty proposed.
That's a column over.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I mean, I I.
I can increase it and then.
I probably add about twenty thousand dollars to it just, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything, but it looks like our webpages. Are all, you know, some kind of Microsoft. Nineteen sixties technology, really think we ought to improve the looking field.
Yep, not a problem with that.
Uh, excuse me, but I think that it may be time to do an RFP if we have to. To see who else is out there that provides these types of services.
So I have to double check on what the contract, I think our contract is for a few more years. I'll double check.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it looks a lot like SharePoint and I'm sure that's the easy button for for most developers. But SharePoint is not the latest technology. We can get better.
Completely understand. Oh, sorry. Okay, so we'll go ahead and add to that. The professional services is again, the outside computer network support. Computer equipment is again, townwide areas of townwide computers and related equipment. All the under general funds. Our software is includes all our finance, budgeting, permitting and HR software. Again, the increase to this fund includes increases to various contracts. Most of them have gone up about five percent. And then moving from other funds, software that should be under this particular fund.
So this is more like an enterprise contracts amount?
Some of, well, not enterprise. So this is all general fund stuff, so.
I mean, this is all for across the entire.
But yes, it would be across the board. Yep. Any other questions under IT?
Well, I need to understand that. So computer software, this wouldn't be the software used by developmental services.
It would also include that. Yes, yeah.
This is everybody.
This is everybody. There may be some stragglers that we want to pull into this fund, but that are being paid out of other department funds, but for the most part. This is all the major software.
Would this include the stuff for the water and sewer?
Some, if it's used in other departments, then a portion of it would be under here. Otherwise, it's under utilities.
All right.
Hundred and forty thousand does that?
Might want to double check the licensing costs because typically they're, they've been going up about ten percent a year. They add all sorts of features that we'll never use, but but I would, I would take a look and double check the numbers.
All right. Thank you, I'm next. So then fleet division is also under administration. The general fund fleet. For this upcoming year, we have two. Two items that will be, two vehicles that will be purchased and that's that the three ton roll off. And the F three fifty with service body and left gate. There are the items that are in the CIP. The fleet division maintenance is for, covers all of the vehicles and equipment under general fund. And then we have supplies listed as well. Any additional questions on that or any questions?
If I can go back to the previous. Then in our. Under, under the goal. Gain town council approval for two or three codes and or policy updates. And I think if you're looking at our strategic planning language, we're looking at all of our ordinances. To review them and realign them. At least that was the discussion. So two or three doesn't quite give it.
But I recall that same discussion. We had talked about taking a look at across the board. At all of our. Ordinances and and.
I agree two or three, but mean everything we do?
That's what we had talked about off the offsite and we'd all kind of nodded our heads north and south.
Well, there's, yeah, I, we're gonna have to prioritize that, though. We're going to. Get specific and we're gonna prioritize what's the most important, what's number two.
But we didn't prioritize in our strategic.
No, we did not. That's my biggest complaint about that.
When we finalize a strategic plan, we need to identify those priorities.
No problem with priority. That's good.
Well, we're, we're gonna do a little bit now. Plan, we have a planning meeting coming up where we'll be able to do the. Code changes that that around planning.
Right, I think that that you need to, this is not all encompassing for every code and ordinance in the entire town. This is specific to like the town code and administration or general fund kind of things, except. Anything that would be pertaining to zoning or those activities in development services. You would find those prioritized in that department. That that's the key. And so we can be more specific with these when we say. We need to update the election criteria to match the town. The the state statutes or whatever, something like that, or something in administration or. Other things, but if it's specific to a function that's in another department like zoning or building or. Whatever that would be in development services, you'll see it in there and we can put that in there and they. You'll see it in there and we can put that in there and they would, they would be prioritized because it's based on the staff. That are responsible for kind of following that process. So you could have multiple things going, but you know, there's always so much that's going to go come from administration, so much from development services. So we need to have that conversation prioritize, you know, pick a few, you know, you know, you're not, can't do everything in. In a day and then, then we'll prioritize what they are, the order you want to get on and we'll get going now.
I think the way to do it is identify all of them and then pick the ones that we want to take a specific look at.
Okay. However, council wants to do it, that will, we'll get.
We had talked at the retreat and then we've talked since then about having a joint meeting between the planning and zoning commission of the town council. Is that going to be happening at some point?
Yes, it will. We gotta get through. Well, we're getting through the budget. And we've got some other things we have to get on the agenda that are related to the budget such as the audit. You know, committee or policy or however, we're going to do this or working on all of those. And then so in the next month or so, we'll know when we can get that scheduled. End of June, something like that, maybe first of July.
So this may be just a little off target, but it would be really great if the council could have. A discussion about prioritizing before we get to the commission.
Oh, yes. Well, but you have to talk about what you want to talk about with the commission. Don't you want some input from them?
But it'd be nice to have our priorities.
I think if we talk about the strategic plan, you're going to have more sense of a consensus on your. Goals and direction generally first, and then you'll have an idea to go into the planning commission.
I don't want to waste their time. Well, well, I mean, part of that meeting is to, but we did, we went through the exercise. I don't know if the planning commissioners putting the items in, but I think that most on council. Put a listing of the, of the zoning changes that they'd like to see. That's not all inclusive because we want to get their ideas too, but then. After we get those things discussed and little understood is to put a priority and, and resources on that and decide where we're going to go, which is number one and all the way down.
But you, you could do the, the finalizing kind of the goals and. For the strategic plan itself as well, because that would be helpful for us to finalize. The documents we're required to put in the budget. That, that, yeah, this has to be finalized in the budget before it's adopted.
We're here for budget and, and, and I know, and the budget impact of these code changes, I guess, will have some mostly staff time. But and then some legal time.
Right. Yeah, it's just, we have to, we have to include the strategic plan in the budget with the goals. In order to meet all the GFOA requirements. That, that's the key.
We're good?
Okay. Okay, next after administration is legal services. And. At the middle of any big lawsuits, so that's a good thing. Didn't budget a whole bunch of money. We, we have a hundred and fifty thousand in there for any unforeseen settlements. Most of our issues go to the risk pool and they cover a portion of, you know. Lawsuits, land use, those kinds of things. So we budgeted for fiscal year twenty four, two hundred thousand. It's a total of three hundred fifty.
This all zones where you're, you just put a chunk of money in there in case something happens.
For the settlement.
Authority if it does happen.
That they'll all come to council. Yeah.
So I, I do have a question on the objectives for the legal. Going back to. That session you told us way back in December twenty twenty two. On page. On page two of the council manager government in Arizona. The things you've identified the lawyer doing work with town manager, planning director, planning commission. Those are really a town council job. If you take a look at page two under council manager form of government. It basically says that. The council are ultimately responsible for making policy decisions about functions, budgets, tax rates, planning and zoning, general plans, long and short range goals, contract approvals. And it also talks a little bit further in there about how the council is responsible for all these different things. The other thing that it states is all governmental authority resides in the council as a body of elected officials. So I think that needs to be reworded a little bit to be more in line with what the Arizona League of Towns and Government, towns and cities.
Are we talking about accomplishments or goals and?
Objectives. Town manager, planning director, planning commission to bring forth updated zoning codes and regulations. Work with town manager, development directors, review and recommend updates to town code to the mayor and town council. The council's job is to actually do those updates. So I don't know how we. We have to approve them, right?
That's correct. They all come to that, but we always provide, we always have the attorney give the legal advice. He's often writes some of the legal language for. New, new codes and ordinances that have to be updated.
wording needs to be clarified.
Okay.
Provide guidance to. Provide legal guidance to. I don't want anybody to think that at the end of the day, if the planning commission does something or legal does something. It's really the town council that's responsible and we're the ones that are going to get beaten up by the public. I'm not trying to be rude or anything.
I got it.
Just want to make sure we're not confusing issues.
Yeah, no.
So if we just added based on the goals of the town council. And then add the rest of the objectives there. Cause we're talking about setting the priorities that I think that covers what you're talking.
That's exactly right. I mean, I've got it.
Yeah.
I've got it written down here. Under the town council page, as you go up to where it says department description, you can stay at all, add one paragraph that says. All government authority resides within the council as a body of elected officials, because that is what we're doing. Then if you go under the goals and objectives. I would change, I'd get rid of the last two and change it to make policy decisions on city functions, budgets, tax rates, planning and zoning. General plans, long and short range goals, contract approvals, which covers all of that stuff. And then I would also make a second bullet. Or the third bullet to be link between the citizens and local government, because that's what the. Let's stick to the league stuff because we don't want to get beat up by those guys on down the line for confusing.
You might want to update his title. He's no longer planning director. No, yeah, in these here, yeah. Okay, we're good. Going on to development services. I'll lower my voice. Be Luke. Okay. So just kind of highlights and development services because it's unique because we. Rolled things into one department. So it includes the prior planning and zoning and building departments into development services. The payroll for all divisions have been consolidated and rolled up into the development services department section. That particular number, it's just a budgeting number. Was formerly planning and zoning. It didn't matter which number we use. That's just the one we picked. The other division, division expenditures for contracts and services, commodities and capital are also all rolled up. Into development services department section of the budget. Then we have two divisions. There used to be a whole bunch of divisions. There were like five or six divisions. In building and we simplified that and rolled it up because there really was no. Again, no reason to break out the salaries. There wasn't, it wasn't tied to any revenue source or. So we rolled that up in that case, and then we reduced the divisions. There was a separate one for parks and a separate for trails. So we combined those into parks and trails. And then the other division is rodeo and rodeo is tied specifically to a contract and we kind of track. What's going on there and who's working there per the contract. So there was a good reason to keep that as a division. And then we took the fleet out as Teresa said, and, and the fleet is now in the administration budget. So the biggest. Item under, in, in this budget is in the payroll section. And, and it's listed on that summary of positions that we handed out. There's vacant position for a plans examiner that. We plan to fill in this year if we can find a qualified candidate. We put that. That is out for recruitment and we haven't had any qualified candidates yet. So then if you go under contracts and services, professional services. You see the proposed budget of one hundred and eighty thousand for the fiscal year twenty four. Of that one hundred and eighty thousand. One hundred and fifty is for third party. Review, plan reviews that would be sent out. That would be reduced if the plans examiner were in house. If we have a filled position that we wouldn't send as many, we always send a certain amount of plan reviews out for third party review. We don't have personnel to cover a hundred percent when it's this busy. So we always have contractors that do third party review, but we normally would have a plans examiner in house that would handle a majority of them. So you see it budgeted both ways. So you've got a plans examiner budgeted that's currently vacant in the twenty four budget. But you also have third party review at hundred and fifty thousand. Both of those are not going to occur. We either fill the position or we continue with our third party review as contractor. And the other thirty thousand that's in the professional services are for consultant. Again, undesignedated, we always have a need for consultants throughout the year. Something comes up. Council has, you know, an issue you'd like us to look into. We hire consultants. So we have thirty thousand dollars in there undesignedated. So that's your opportunity to designate if you need it. Or you can change the dollar amount depending on what it is, but that is in the professional services. Let's see what else is in there. I have a list here. All right, we're on development services. We did payrolls at the top. I talked about the plans examiner. Then I went to the contracts and services right below it. Under professional services was the one hundred and eighty and hundred and fifty is third party. We plan review and thirty thousand for contractor.
Carrie, where, where are the revenues? There's a substantial amount of revenue from fees and there's, and the rodeo has, you know, modest amount of revenue.
Those are in the general fund revenues that you see on the summary page. The very first page we went over, all the revenue.
Are, are they broken out where we can see them? What, what I'm specifically looking for is do, are, are the fees that we're bringing in, do they, do they cover that one point six million dollars P and Z?
Most of those revenues are going to cover. Building, the majority of the highest fees that continually go up, they're set on a schedule to always increase, cover the building. Okay, we'll break them up.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's a general procedure that if, if we have a. Significant department that has a significant revenue that I'll be matched against what those. Fees are so that we can see are the fees covering the cost. I mean, I, this is one of my areas. Major areas of concern for some time is that I. Have never been comfortable that we're covering the fees and, and that would include. When a, when a project comes in and you need engineering or you need utility opinions and they spend time on it, are those fees, all those fees being captured and put into the fee so that. The general fund is not subsidizing the, the, the building activities.
I can get those broken out.
And the other one is the visibility on the rodeo. The, you know, we're going to put money in there. We put a lot of money already. We're putting more in there. There needs to be some visibility on. How, how much of the operating expenses we're covering? And how many events? I mean, what is, what's the utilization is, is it worth it? Because we, once you put money into something, we want to use it. We want the community to use. I, I, and honestly, I, I think that one of the departmental objectives ought to be rodeo. Some sort of rodeo utilization number, number, number events, money. I, I don't know what that would be, but. So, some way to, to show that we're getting our money's worth out of all the money that we spent there. And of course, rodeo spending a lot of money down there too.
Okay.
It's a great asset. Let's look for somebody turn. Yep. And I have, I have a similar question. I don't see where. We do a grant to the library.
That'll be in grants.
The museum has been asked to contribute energy to the local landmarks work and all of that. I don't see any kind of help for the museum in here.
No, they, they offered to take it over after this year. It's not this year. That this, this, this coming fiscal year, we have budgeted under economic development. We have the funds for the local landmarks prob, a project. It's twelve thousand under economic development and then. The tourism bureau, we have another three thousand that would be for another concierge tour. And we have media advertising. We spend five thousand dollars. We use True West and Drive Guide, et cetera. Those are the, some of our local. Local magazines. And then under non-professional services, there's another five thousand dollars that we keep that support. Anything that comes up in economic development that could be tied to those things. Now, I know there are some, some issues. At the tourism bureau about signage and things like that. And those, those requests are already underway for this fiscal year. And then there was a request to. Do some artwork on a wall out there. We, we contacted the school looking for, you know, try to put the students in there. They didn't have any interest right now, but. We'll try again in the new school year and see if we can do something there. And the other thing was they had requested landscaping. It doesn't come with the lease. But at the same time, the town is not allowed to spend public funds on somebody else's property. So we're working with the local landscaper to see if they could donate a little time, try to work something. Okay, or even if we have to pay. Them, but if you pay them and they're working on somebody else, it doesn't quite work. So we have to be careful of that.
Which I want to point out that until, there's not a single place on the rodeo grounds to relieve yourself. And until that issue is, is solved. You're not going to have as many, many events out there. We have, I mean, if y'all have been out to the rodeo, the rodeo committee rents. Tons of porta potties just, just to cover it. This coming weekend or maybe it was last, you know, this coming. Well, I don't know which one is, there's a, there's a. It's leased out or rented out to a, a barrel racing of.
It's leased out or rented out to a, a barrel racing event where they're, where they're doing stuff. Those ladies are. Probably going to have to find a place to, there's not even bushes out there to hide behind. So. Until that issue is solved, you're never going to get full utilization and, and realize what that, what that property is capable of being.
We have money in here for that.
Yeah, we're working, we're working on it, but we're, we're talking about how, how much can we utilize it? It's, it's. Going to be pretty darn good when it's actually a full-function facility.
So I've got a question. Why is streetscape under development services? Why wouldn't you have that under?
It actually is, this, this used to be in there back through fiscal year twenty-one. And so that'll drop off next year when we do fiscal year twenty-five. It's already moved over. Yeah, well, you'll see that in, in public works. Yeah. Trails and parks, that would be Desert Awareness Park and, you know, the trail pathways. So there, there's. Some maintenance in there. There's just pieces and parts of the, the town core pathways that are left to be. Completed in of what we have access to. So. I asked Luke for a map of the areas that we, we hear about the most. Difficult to, to walk through. And the easiest one that we'll be able to address is we are working with Harald's on the south side of Cape Creek Road. There's enough room there for that to be improved. So we're working with Harold's on that piece of it. But the more difficult sections of. The trails and pathway are on the north side. Of Cape Creek Road. So you, you know where the old town dump is and there's a, there was a fence up right there. And, and Hal can chime in on how the right-of-way is set up. We. The way Cave Creek Road is, some areas have right-of-way and others have none. It, it, just the way it developed over the years and so. The, the parts that aren't done that are the most difficult. We don't have right-of-way or we have, you know, a couple of feet of, of right-of-way. So we can't just go in and put in a pathway. It's not about. The money. It's about access to it. And so the old town dump. We would, that's, that would be a challenge. We have to work with the property owner to provide an easement. But it's also a difficult place. That would have to be a hard scape of some sort. You couldn't just go in and, and put crushed granite. Next to that is the Rico Plaza. And that is the area that we have an opportunity to work with the property owner. And so we're taking advantage of that. So we're hoping. That. We, we have an agreement in this next fiscal year in twenty-four. Circle K is next to it. That is difficult mostly because. There, there isn't a lot of room. We don't have a right-of-way or an easement there. But also just the curve of it and they, they wanted to protect. Their property and, and not have cars coming around and, or people walking where there's cars driving in and out of that circle cave. So. I mean, I have maps with where the right-of-way is and where it isn't. So there really just isn't anything. So. That's just going to take a little bit of time to negotiate with the property owners. And oh, the other issue was Circle K was the retention basin. It's required retention basin and it's right there at the edge of the road. And so we'd have to do some.
I'm sitting here dancing in my chair a little bit because this is a safety issue.
I understand.
And it absolutely has to be solved.
Yes.
Absolutely. As on a priority basis, I, I see we have a hundred thousand dollars. Spread over three years and stuff. I'm not sure that we've got the right priority on something that. At least the pedestrian portion of it, we've got documents and, and walking on that road is, we just got to get it solved. Whatever the problems are, we've got to overcome them.
Well, there's only two ways to do it. Have the property owner agree with us to work with us or we go take it.
That's for years, years to solve.
The town for many years has not been willing. So if this council is willing to take something. That would be a huge change for the town because it's, no one has wanted to go in and, and do that.
Carrie, the town dump, has that changed? It, it's changed function? Has it changed ownership?
Yes, it has.
Okay, and in, in that change in ownership. Okay, I, I get that. In the change in ownership, there's often a negotiation that takes place, but I gather.
There's no permits or any.
Okay.
Anything at this time that we have something to negotiate with.
Thank you.
We do with the Rico Plaza. So that's why we're working on that.
So all of that remodeling that's going on in the town dump is without a permit, without a.
No, I mean, you, you, when they need something, it's not that you're going to get a building permit to do a tenant approval. If they. If they're required to do something, we can say, yeah, here we can waive these fees here, but you gotta instead do this. We, we don't have that with the town though. What we do is Rico. And we don't. And so the other opportunity has not been. That would be a discussion with the council to see if there is consensus on that and.
It brings a plan. I mean, we don't, I mean, we, we need to solve the problem. Bring us options to solve the problem.
Are, are we talking about condemnation? Is that the word? Yeah, and condemnation. Wow. We, we, yeah. Yeah, that, that, that favors the owner to such an extent. It can be very expensive. I hear you, Bob.
Well, but we, we don't jump to the radical before we've explored all the easy ways to do this. There's, is there money in here to do it the easy way?
If the property owner is willing to, yes, absolutely. It's not a money thing. It's the property owner has to agree to give us an easement. It's not like we haven't tried to get an easement with the property.
Well, we're being a dead horse here. We need to fix the sidewalks and now it's in your, and, and there should be enough money in here to get done whatever we need to get done.
There is. Money is not the issue. We said it at the last meeting.
I'm willing to do whatever is necessary to protect people.
Sounds like we need to meet with George.
No, I, we, I, I'm not paying you.
Are you suggesting we, we try and purchase rather than use normal methods?
I'm a business guy.
Yeah.
We find ways to get stuff done without.
I know. Has George been unreasonable? Have we requested this of him? I, I don't know the exact details, but I will find out the exact details. I'd be more than happy to meet with George. Yeah. He came to the meeting. That was, that was very promising. That's where we are. We're negotiating, but I don't have. I don't have a number. I don't have a thing. I don't have a date.
It's a budget meeting. Do you have enough money to get the job?
Yes, we do.
That's, that's all. Let's move on.
Okay, and tho, those were the main things in development services.
No, there's one more.
Sorry, what did I miss here? Hold on, hold on. I need to get to rodeo too. What, what else do you need?
Well, the question is, I don't see anything in developmental services about, once again, looking at our ordinances.
I, I just said back under contracts and services, under professional services. The, the second item.
Okay.
Okay, there's thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
In the hundred and eighty that is reserved for consultants.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Contracts and then building review and all of that, that we rolled up the salaries and all of. So you keep going to facilities and that's all, all rolled up as well. So you don't see anything in the blue column until you come down. To the next page under rodeo grounds. So there you, you see the electric waters, sewer crash. Non-professional services that miscellaneous things that they have at the rodeo and, and maintenance. The majority of that is. Staff time that you would find in the payroll. They have supplies out there and then the big thing is the capital improvement and the three hundred and fifty thousand. Is for the restrooms, but I can say that of the restrooms. We already have the design, so we will be paying for that in this fiscal year. And then we have that out for quotes for construction to start and. Those should be coming in. If we can get that to council, they will actually start construction. So. We have three hundred and fifty in this year and three hundred and fifty in next year. And we're hoping to spend. Half or more this year so that it'll be done early.
There, there was a question. Have we received any kind of assurances that, does this complete the, the worklist, the checklist so that we can get?
There's one document that we're trying to get a hard copy of from Bureau of Land Management. And Luke has contacted them and he has the, the document number and everything. I think. Vice Mayor had asked for that, but he didn't have it. He was going to try and get that Friday and he didn't have it.
They have not responded well. They're not real.
No, but we can go, we can go through the county parks and get somebody to respond to. It just takes a little bit of time.
So it's not available online? It's not a public record?
Apparently not. Yeah. But that's just that the heart. We, we know, we have, the county has an agreement with BLM for a lease out to twenty thirty-two. The county has no interest in taking over the park and they are the ones, you know, we're, it's the three of us have worked together over the years. That we do the improvements and they will work with BLM and get that turned over to the town as well.
I got a question on the Gateway Trailhead. From the Gateway Trailhead, you can either turn left and go towards Cape Creek Regional Park, or you can turn right and go down Cape Creek Wash. Most of the people on those property owners, have they given us right-of-ways?
The intent is to go on the, the, to a trail, so I can't tell you exactly where the trail is. But the.
Right now, the only trail that I know that we've gotten approved is, is over through Cape Creek Regional Park. My question is. If we're putting the Gateway Trailhead there, is there some intent that we're going to try to force property owners to give an easement of Cape Creek Wash?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I'll, I'll talk to BMB in the morning about it, but that is tied to a grant. And if we don't get the grant, we're, we're not doing it. So. And that would come before council anyway. So, but I'll, I'll get an answer for you before Thursday.
I just. We have a lot of trails and I know we've had litigation in the past. The last thing in the world I want to see is another ten years. Of litigation because we didn't dot our i's and cross our t's. So if we're going to create that trailhead. I want to make sure that we have the easements and everything to get it up to Cape Creek Regional Park.
There is a trail that goes from Cave Creek Regional Park into the Phoenix Reserve. The trail is there. It's been there several years.
Well, that's what I thought, but I, I just don't know.
You should walk it. It's a nice trail. But what we need is some way for people to really easily access that trail. But the trail is there. I've used it legally.
If we could, we'd ask for a copy of the new map if we could get that at some point. That would be helpful.
That's it. Any other questions? We'll move on to the next. magistrate court is by contract with the town of Carefree. So the current fiscal year cost for magistrate court is all under. Contracts, professional services contracts. The monthly fee is sixteen thousand fifty-three and. Court services will increase by a maximum cap of four percent, six hundred and seventeen dollars per month. The new rate schedule will be as follows. So that's sixteen thousand fifty-three. Should add up to the ones ninety-two, six fifty.
This is another one that has a revenue stream.
Yes.
It's, it's invisible in every document I've seen. I, I, I'm not sure. Is, is that revenue in here?
The revenue to us or the revenue to Carefree?
Revenue to us, from the tickets.
The tickets go to Carefree.
Not, not the entire amount.
Yeah, eighty-five percent of it goes to Superior Court.
Yeah.
Well, it wasn't worth the eighty-five percent.
Or eighty percent, eighty, eighty-five percent.
Yeah, we, we did a whole breakdown. I'll, I'll pull the breakdown for you. It worked out.
But so, but, but my understanding of that was.
The revenues go to Carefree and then our, our revenue goes to Carefree. And then they pay for certain things and we pay for certain things. And in the end, it all kind of comes out pretty even.
That's, that's the analysis that we saw.
Yeah, yeah, I was kind of.
There, there's no ongoing need to track the revenue stream?
No, no, that goes to them.
So if there's a document.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's just a. Okay.
I'm glad you're here, Tom.
Onto law enforcement or actually public safety and the first part of public safety is law enforcement and obviously the. Largest expense in law enforcement is the contract with MCSO. Which went up quite a bit and so Marshall gave me some, some details on that, but I can tell you that the majority. Of the increase in the contractors, personnel.
Before we do that, back in the development services, can we get, can we get? Some money set aside to have somebody take a look at parking? I've talked to several of the business owners on Cape Creek Road, maybe on Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights. We could shut down half of the roadway and do diagonal parking or something. Can we do something? To take a look at options for parking?
Yes.
Because I've heard from numerous people.
There, there is, there's both a. Town. Agreement that is underway and you will be briefed on that. April seventeenth in executive session on the negotiations for. An agreement that would bring some additional parking. And then there was a private purchase of land. For additional parking by a business that has closed. And I'll have to find out. You know, what the status is of the improvement on it. But there's two big things that are going to change the parking and they're coming up. You'll be aware of them.
It's the problem isn't going to be parking lots. Okay. The problem is going to be getting people from the parking lots. Across the street or wherever they have to go, walking up and down the street. So is there something we can do to take a look at what other options we might be able to use? You, you got to remember, we have a hundred thousand people that are going to be coming into Cape Creek here. Not into Cape Creek, but into this area with the chip plants and everything else they're constructing. We're one of the few places. It's kind of a cool place to come see. So I just want to make sure that we're not screwing our own businesses by not having. Facilities, parking, those kinds of things available so that they can make money to bring back to us too.
Well, let me ask, let me ask you about this. How are we screwing somebody if they don't put enough parking?
Well, previous town councils approved a lot of buildings without sufficient parking. I mean, you go, go, go check Harald's or, or the Buffalo Chip at night. I mean.
But it's that, the parking for a business is fundamentally the business's issue.
I understand that, but why did we approve those buildings without?
You'll have to.
Yeah, they, they came to us and they met our ordinances. Our ordinances, they have an ordinance for bullfighting when Harold, when they. When they're doing it, they need a lot more parking than the ordinance. So it's a very different situation.
But that's a problem that we're going to continue having.
Yes.
So whether we want to accept it or not, we're going to have to do something about parking at some point or we're going to lose out on business.
And, and it's, you know, Carrie said it's in progress.
The, the businesses make money with more parking. That's why businesses put parking in so they can operate. And it's a fundamental. Principle. That a business supplies its own parking. Now, if we have a general area like, you know, Sedona, that, that you can put it in and it serves multiple businesses. That is a good reason.
That's what I was talking about. If you take
Let me finish one thing.
Okay.
But if somebody has a a chronic issue, the way that the Buffalo Chip has, that's fundamentally a Buffalo Chip issue to solve. If it's one specific business in one specific area.
Yeah, I'm not talking about one specific business. When we have festivals or things like that, there's always insufficient parking. I don't care where we go. You either do it down at Stagecoach Village. You got people parked all the way down the hills. You got people parked all the way, you know, as far down as the bars. So the the question I've got, is there something we can do to study the parking issue above and beyond the two two things that you're talking about, Carrie?
Mayor Councilman Rhodes, it's it's an issue that we've been studying in different capacities for a few years. And it it's tied to multiple things. Parking is one issue, but it's the pedestrian safety, traffic and movement and all of those studies that we've had. And so we have a lot of that information. And now it's kind of putting together the the pieces of the puzzle. We looked at changing traffic flow, parking options, the diagonal parking actually came up in one of the studies as a discussion point. But the the business that has caused the most complaints in town is the business that purchased land to develop parking which which will be safe for those people frequently that business or, you know, the close by, the businesses close by to that business will resolve that issue. So that's one thing that causes an ongoing every week issue. I think if we can resolve the the day to day and week to week issues, it's gonna be hard to plan for, you know, the couple of really big events in town. And, you know, we can look at other solutions for that, perhaps requiring people be bussed in or something. I mean, there isn't enough parking for those those big events. But for the day to day and week to week issues, we really have some good solutions coming down the pike for parking, both from the town and the businesses that will improve for kind of like your daily life, the people who get through town who live here, but also for the people visiting and being safer. But it's tied to the pathways and moving pedestrians. It's tied to crossing the streets and and you'll see that in the in the public works for crossings and the lighting and what the recommendations from the traffic studies are. And you'll see that there's the speed tables where the recommendation at the time it was the least impactful of all of the options. And that is something that council will have to talk about in the budget and agree to. So that there's lots of pieces of the puzzle, but we've been working on it. We're still continuing, but I think we're gonna get, go in the right direction where you want to go. Okay.
Okay. We had a request, take a five minute break, so we'll reconvene at, let's take ten, eight oh five. Take it away.
Mr. Mayor Council, I appreciate this opportunity to present the budget, just the highlights from the Marshal's Office. Obviously, the the white elephant in the room is there was a sharp increase in the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office contract. Fiscal year twenty twenty-three was eight hundred eighty-five thousand six hundred fiscal year twenty twenty-fourteen is over a million forty-seven, represents approximately a hundred and four thousand dollar increase, which was under the salary and benefits for the Sheriff's Office, not mine unfortunately. And another sixty-five thousand approximately in sort of special pay. Special pay is the Sheriff's Office operates at a deficit. They don't have enough personnel. Law enforcement in total throughout the country is suffering from a lack of people that wanna do this great job. So because of that, their special, they call it special pay, but that's that's the overtime, really deputies that are required to work extra shifts and whatnot. So that's why we saw that that large increase. And also, you know, there's incentive pay nowadays to stay in the agencies and recruitment pay as well, which most law enforcement's doing. We can't hold that against them. That's that's what they do. We also saw an increase over in the subscriptions and that's kind of an amusing story for me. I shouldn't say it, but the Maricopa County Wireless controls all the police radios and they kind of forgot about us for a number of years. So I didn't budget for it because they weren't billing us for it. Someone realized that they forgot to bill us for a few years and now they started billing us again. So if you look at the subscriptions line, that that's pretty much why you see a fairly sharp increase, forty-five hundred to fifteen thousand. We actually have to pay for the radios we're using, which seems fair. Anyway, and then you'll also see under computers, I budget for a replacement computer, the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office and I have a police laptop that I use for dispatching, watching calls for service, that type of thing. As any electronic equipment, you know, they have a shelf life of or useful life of X amount of years and ours is kind of at that point. So if it croaks, we'll replace it. If it doesn't, we won't. We won't have to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I have some.
So.
Yeah. The most can't deal with it. I get a lot of complaints about traffic enforcement, say it that way. And I went to talk to the sheriff's captain. We talked for an hour and a half and I heard all the reasons they can't do, can't enforce the laws and traffic laws. But he he did have a suggestion that was to modify the contract, to reduce the contract. And then we could have the money to do our own enforcement. And I don't know how that would work. But my my question is, can we hire contract traffic enforcement? Can we hire people to enforce traffic law to give tickets out and make stops?
Just to point of clarity, I want to make sure I understood what you said. You met with the captain from the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. He recommended we decrease the contract.
Yes, he did.
He's obviously not in marketing. And um, yes, of course, we we could certainly look into other traffic enforcement options. I'm sure you've noticed that my traffic enforcement's increased. We're we're trying to find more time where I can get out there, include more cars as well, and that's been helpful. The Sheriff's Office is certainly under a consent decree and and that makes their job a little more difficult, I believe, puts a lot more scrutiny on them. We can't go out, we can't hire, in my opinion, police officers from another jurisdiction to come into our jurisdiction to strictly do traffic enforcement. We could look at increasing personnel, you know, maybe a half time person that would specialize in in traffic.
Well, I'm I'm just saying, let's take the constraints off and think about, I mean, I haven't seen any decrease in speed in town. I mean, there's, I I see, I see I don't know, three, four times now of sheriff's vehicles in town that I used to see. I'm, has it affected speed yet? It doesn't appear to be. So and that's the that's the needle we're trying to move is is keeping the speed through town lower to reduce pedestrian problems. I I, let's take the strengths off and and think about doing something ourselves. If they can't write tickets, how can we get tickets written? We have law enforcement.
We do.
So it's a resource issue. Can we find an economical way to enforce the the traffic laws in town?
I I could certainly look at options.
He did mention his idea, not mine, that there is one part of that contract that I didn't know existed, which is over and above some, it it's an extra that's in there. That he said, well, you can, we can give this back to you and you could use this money to go do something else. So.
Sure. In previous years, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, previous years, town Kate created contractor, which was a traffic car. Carefree does a traffic car and the traffic car is basically a dedicated officer who is focusing on high impact traffic. So, but it, but again, it comes at a cost and and you know, certainly
But it's still the sheriff and the sheriff has still got all these problems.
It is, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and members of council. However, for example, the the individual that we used to have, and in fact, the current guy that that's in in the Carefree traffic car position. I want to say his sole function of life is the vehicle and traffic law, but I would tell you that probably eighty to eighty-five percent of what he does, maybe ninety percent is the vehicle and traffic laws in the town of Carefree. We benefit from it because he drives to through Cave Creek to get into Carefree. So he still does traffic enforcement along the way, but his sole function in life really enforce a law, but vehicle and traffic law.
Didn't they stop that? I
No, sir. It it's seasonal, right? I I don't know how many months they're currently paying for, but I I believe there's a a three month lag during maybe the winter where that where it goes off, but it's certainly something we can look at. Again, what they do when they hire for that position is they recruit officers who are more motivated would be the best way I can think of it. And that position, because it's discretionary funding, you know, we could cut it or we could we can endorse it.
Well, I I guess I'm having trouble paying money for enforcement. We're not getting. Because that's basically what he told me is, yeah, we have the people in case of emergency that we we got this decree and now the new sheriff now has a another consent decree or something. He's got one on him, just like the previous sheriff had on him. And I just didn't come away with any kind of positive that the sheriff was going to be able to enforce the traffic laws in this town. So how are we going to enforce the traffic laws?
I will get with my town manager and we'll discuss it and I'll have a better answer for you.
Yeah, and and
First time I've seen brought up.
Once again, this is a safety issue. It's a public safety issue. We have a consultant study, a mag study that says we had sixteen pedestrian accidents over that period of time and that our rating was bad and I think we need to take action. And if the sheriff can't do it, okay, what what's the next option?
We are talking about the table bumps and I would think that those may help.
Yes, we are certainly talking about traffic calming measures. I'm sure you'll hear from our astounded town engineer about those issues. And again, it it's it's a team approach, right? We we have the traffic trailers, we have speed trailers, we have the sheriff's office, we have the marshal's office, we have traffic calming measures as far as the the speed tables and everything else. I I think we're gonna see changes and I think we're gonna see an overall decrease in the speeds through town with all of these measures going to effect. As I said, my my traffic counts have gone up as well as far as what I'm doing for vehicle traffic law. We're trying, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I definitely think it was gonna start seeing some good results.
Well, we had that that the number of forty-three miles an hour at the eighty-five percentile. I mean, hey, there there's a benchmark to start from. Okay, has it shown that once a year, once every six months, we ought to do something like that and see are we moving the needle? But I think anecdotally, I don't see any decrease in speed in town.
We might go decrease the speeds in town.
No, no, I shouldn't say the speeds, the 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 outliers, the ones that are just rocking right through town. Those are the ones that they're going fifty miles an hour.
Did pull over sixty-eight in a thirty during the last week of bike week.
That's a new record for me. I haven't seen that. Okay.
Trying.
I I mean, I'd like to see this budget address the traffic enforcement issues in town, which is the number one complaint I get.
I have to say the the biggest number in terms of of budgeted expense is the traffic calming devices, that piece of the pedestrian traffic safety measure was the speed tables and the crosswalks that there the lighting that went with it, but the speed tables alone were part of the traffic calming to slow the speed.
So I guess later on, we'll talk about speed tables.
Marshall, you might want to also take a look at at the traffic cameras. You know, Scottsdale's got those nasty things all over the place.
Starting to love you. I think the rest of the room right now might be throwing daggers at you and I, but I
Look, I've I've almost been clobbered walking across the street downtown, so I I get the
There's current legislation that would greatly limit any ability of any municipality in the state of Arizona to have any traffic enforcement through photo radar and such. And I believe the mayor would probably know a little better than I would, pardon me, but I do believe that 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 measure does have some pretty serious traction right now. A lot of people don't like photocop for some reason. We'll talk offline about that. Anything else I may help you with? I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Cape Creek has a rich history in attempting to establish its own constabulary here in the past and when you hear the six percent increases, the computer increases and subscription increases, maybe the focus should be to try to renegotiate the relationship with the sheriff's office for the services provided. It's not a new issue. It's an issue that I and others faced many years ago. I just would offer a cautionary tale against a Cave Creek Police Department. You have a fire department. I don't know that you want to go to a Cave Creek Police Department. If you want to augment the marshal's office and provide additional personnel, which we used to have more personnel in the past assigned to that position, that might be a worthy discussion, but I, there is many, many reasons that I think I would suggest a more cautionary approach besides speed enforcement with a local police department. And maybe we, I'll leave it for here until we get into a work session on the on the topic, but it's been proposed before, Ernie was nodding, it's been tried and for. You'll never get the quality of the resources that you're already paying taxes for to Maricopa County government, especially they try to split six ways and we have a smaller county to work on by replicating everything up here. We built this building years ago to provide an annex for the sheriff's office. We used to have the court over here that's been moved to Carefree. We have, I think, the jail still here and so forth. But you may have spoken to the wrong person. You may have not taken a delegation down that was able to communicate as best it could. But we, in a town of six thousand people, I think we've got all the government that we can afford at that sum. And I think a police department is a very sobering decision for many, many reasons. This is a town that imposed an ordinance against a laborer standing in front of the circle K and lost a lawsuit from the ACLU. So I know the history is is invisible in the past, but I would just offer myself as a resource or others, including the manager who's been here for many years and can give you the history of some of the problems. But that's all right. She doesn't want to offer that, but we can find somebody else.
Yeah, just to clarify the record, I am not suggesting Cave Creek Police Department.
Okay.
Because we don't have enough crime to start it and we're paying taxes, we're paying taxes to the sheriff. All of us are paying taxes to the sheriff and on top of that, we have this million dollar contract. So Anthem, for example, is not incorporated and they're getting theirs just with their property tax. They don't pay the extra million bucks. No, I'm I'm agree with you a hundred percent. We have, I have no intention of starting any police departments, but I but I do want to solve the traffic problem.
I'll work on that.
Yeah.
And I agree with
Not not, we don't need SWAT teams and helicopters.
There are days when we need that, but that's from the sheriff's office. We've had some bad days. Thank you.
Public safety, fire and emergency medical. I'll just let you go. You can do it faster than me.
I didn't know if you were gonna make comments. That's fine. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for having us here tonight. Here to kind of go over the public safety foreign emergency budget, which is pretty new to the the town. We're in our second year. So so there's a little bit to compare to, but not not that much. You can't go back that far. The biggest thing, the the top part is the stuff that's paid for for me in the town. The biggest part of this contract or the biggest part of this budget is the professional services. And in the professional services is where our contract is with Daisy Mountain Fire and Medical. And also in that is the dispatch that we pay for Phoenix each year, the annual dispatch for that. And also included in that this year is the professional services that we signed up with ProMan Architects to do the design of the fire station. That's included in those numbers that you see before you. You see that the the first top number goes up two hundred and five thousand dollars. That is actually less than That is actually less than that because the dispatch for last year, the current this current year was not for some reason included in the budget, it got left out. But we've pretty much covered that with a rebate that we got from the the Wildland Fire, some of the Wildland Fire stuff that we didn't have to pay for this past year. So what makes up the budget for the Daisy Mountain is the first part is the the total payroll for all your first staffing, which is three captains, three engineers, six advanced life support firefighters, three basic life support firefighters. And that staffing comes to one point eight million dollars a year. And top of that, you made the decision last time when we put all this together, that you wanted extra coverage for wildland fire season. And so you do get the wildland fire season. And last year it was a, where I have it here. Last year was a hundred and one thousand dollars, eight oh eight. And then again, anything that we don't spend on that because of the monsoon or anything that comes up, we cut those off early, we get that back. Get that rebated back to us was about forty thousand dollars this year. I think we got rebated back. But next year, again, we have a hundred and twenty-six days at eight hundred and eighty dollars a day, so it comes out to a hundred and eleven thousand dollars. So you have your primary staffing for your twenty-four seven for your medics, for your captains and engineers. And then we add another hundred and eleven thousand dollars on that. So the total fire budget for Daisy Mountain for Wildland Staffing and firefighter staffing is two point five million dollars, a little bit more. The dispatch is estimated at seventy-seven thousand dollars this year. And included in that, it's broken up by our contract, by our governmental agreement. So the four components are your firefighter staffing, your wildland, your vehicles and equipment and your administrative support. Our administrative support, we pay one-sixth of their administrative costs because we're one of six stations. And that's sixteen point six percent. So that's it's just the formula we go through each year. We take the mid-range of their salaries and their benefits and we put it together and we come up with these numbers. So this year it ended up coming up to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars increase. And if you recall last year, there was very little, if any, increase at all because of the stuff that went on with COVID and because of some of the issues that they had with the insurance, we paid a little bit extra for the insurance, but we did not increase the salaries last year for this full year that we're currently in. So they are catching up just a little bit. The rest of the budget I looked at and tried to pull it down as much as we could. The equipment, we have sixty thousand in there for ongoing equipment in case we break something, as an example. A heart monitor that's on the engine is ours. If we break the heart monitor, that's twenty-five thousand dollars just for a heart monitor. So we have to have some money in the budget in case we break some of that equipment. So but I did cut that down from sixty to thirty thousand dollars. The big issue for us, and we've talked about this before, is the capital. And the capital that's going towards the fire station and the remodel of the fire station to build out of that. And I think Mayor, to one of your earlier comments of how much money we have in the budget or in the savings of the budget, if you recall, those of you that were here when we started this, you guys had said there's five million dollars or so in that budget to get started and to redo the station and all that stuff. And we just haven't spent that money yet. So some of that savings that's in there is still from when we started this up two years ago. So what we've done though is we've taken that money. We've taken our budget this year and we're doing it go as you pay capital. So I'm not asking to get that money yet until we we get further down the road. So we're doing pay as you go capital. Not we're not asking to take that out of the savings as we originally had had budgeted for. And with that, I can answer any questions that you like. We pay our bill to Daisy Mountain quarterly. We pay it at the beginning of each quarter. And so it's for for equal amounts, with the exception of we pay the wildland in two half half amounts at the end and the beginning of each year.
So I think my only question is to is to Mitzi. Our passing notes in class. It seems to me that we're digesting this great big fire department expenditures, both capital and ongoing costs very well. Would that be fair to say?
Mayor and council, that would be a true statement.
I try. We we've our partners with Daisy Mountain have worked with us very well with that. Like I said, last year we had very little increase, if at all, I think it was just the government insurance. And this year they have a new contract with their firefighters and again, it's as when we set this up initially, it's a formula. We just plug in the numbers and that's it's what the formula is. So I think what was a a total increase of less than ten percent. So for this year.
Thank you. Very, very good. Any questions from council?
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I am going to be presenting the finance budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and the biggest significant change in finances budget is the reduction in the amount for the audit services line and that that budgeted line item got moved from finance into town council's budget due to the establishment of the audit committee and approval of the audit contract by council.
May I just stop right? I'm not sure everyone's fully up to speed on this one.
Okay.
But but it it is a best practice throughout the world for the the auditor to work for an audit committee at the highest level in the organization. And that has not been the case here in the past. And so it I I'm going to have a a council item to bring forth a proposal to do that. The the first year, what I'd propose doing, and I I have have all the documentation on the best practices, it's in in business, it's just standard procedure. First year accounts of a committee of the whole so that the auditor would work for and report to and the council would direct the auditor's activities with the with our current auditor. And then perhaps once we do that, it may we may decide to make changes or not, but that's that's all in the future. But I think this budget has that staff has already moved on that. And
So is there an audit committee now existing?
No. The the auditor works for staff.
Well, let me clarify that. There was a contract that was let by the council. And then each year the budget shows in in finance for the cost of the auditor. The engagement letter each year is what is signed by the town manager. But then after the audit is complete, there are there's a presentation and questions to the town manager about whether or not am I aware of any fraud and any, you know, the the usual checkoff list of that where I answer yes or no, yes or no, and I'm I sign off on that. That would be something that could come to the council. And but I'm assuming with the staff because we would have to be part of that, you know, yes or no questions. And then there is an audit report that is submitted with findings and recommendations. And all of that comes to council and is presented by the auditor in a public meeting. So that that's the extent of the audit that we've been involved in.
The the council would have more involvement.
Right.
You'd be at an opening conference, there'd be meetings, they'd come in and report the 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 scope of what they plan to do and what they've done and typically in audits, there's not only the single line letter that says we found no material problems and we tested things, but there's in audits that have been done, I've always been the receiving end of audits, I've never unfortunately, but there was always a separate letter that went up that said, hey, we didn't find anything material, but here's a few ideas on how you can improve your operation because we go down to C cities all over the state. And here's some best practices you can put into effect.
So the audit, you're using the word audit committee? And that's an internal group?
That that would be us.
All right, that's that was really my question.
Yeah. Okay. And and so the auditor would feel like they are working for us auditing the 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 town itself, the management of the town and reporting to the highest body in the town. That is a standard practice and a best practice by every organization you can find. And so it's just conforming us to the way the rest of the world operates.
So that's scheduled for the first meeting in May, I believe, for the committee. And the second meeting in May, the auditor will be here to speak with the council and that is when the council would authorize the mayor to sign the engagement letter. So he'll have that prepared. I already have a PowerPoint presentation from him that will come to council about what they do, what their charge is, what they don't do, you know, those kinds of things so that it's all presented to the whole council in public.
Thank you.
And so the that was the significant change in the finance budget. We've got professional services in there that represents our sales tax audits that are performed and salaries, of course, and that's it for finance. Small budget. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys might have.
The utility specialist, billing specialist, have they moved to utilities?
They are paid for under the enterprise funds.
And then next is the town council budget. Because you are so kind to work for the community with no pay, you are considered volunteers and we have workman's compensation for you. The audit services were moved into the budget at forty-five thousand dollars. We have professional services twenty-five thousand dollars that is for the council to decide how is is that enough money and how you would like to use it? That is undesigned at this point. Employee training and memberships are for the council meetings and training such as the league conference and and others as you are interested at fifteen thousand. And then we have the community grants for forty thousand dollars. We have that designated to the museum. But there's been some interest in having a little different process at if council is interested in that for the community grants. And then we also have, we are in discussions with the library. I'm I'm not sure yet if the library needs and and mutual needs between the town and the library is best suited at at this point for community grants. We need some additional discussion. It might be better served in an agreement because they have some needs. I don't know what their ongoing needs would be, but we have some ongoing needs for their facility. And the use of their roof and things like that. So there may be a better way to work with the library. And they would allow us to do certain things and we'll do certain things for them. And and it's long-term, long-term agreements that that could be a radio tower for fire in the future and things like that. So we have a list of things, they have a list of things. They have a short-term item for a tower that they took down and they would like a flagpole installed. And so I have a quote for the cost of the flagpole and had already offered installation services at no charge and we could waive the cost of the permit. They're required to get a permit, but we could waive the fee for them. So there's some negotiation if depending on the cost. I I I don't know what the cost is off the top of my head, but I think it's nominal that I could sign off on that. And that those kinds of things could come out of these funds, but we probably have other places in the budget that we could cover that and you could use that for a more robust program, however you envision it.
When will we decide? When it's feasible to change the process if we so decide? What?
Whatever, the way the policy is written is it's it it's a little bit limiting. Back in the day, people were lined up out the door and everybody came in and you'd have what, David, plenty? Please, both David's, you were both here. Long line of people that everybody wanted money. And, you know, they were nonprofit and they needed this or that. And so the criteria was established. Oh, gosh, back when Ralph Mizillo was on council. And the criteria were specific to events that were unique in town. At the time, we had Wild West Days and so we had the the what do you call it? The the business organization. I can't think of the name.
Or just association.
Merchants Association. And so we gave them ten thousand dollars and they would use that money towards Wild West Days in the fall. And then we gave ten thousand dollars to the library and ten thousand to the museum and ten thousand to the rodeo committee. But now we have a an agreement with the rodeo committee between the towns. So we we fund it through, you know, as part of that committee agreement. So it was defined as functions that would otherwise in in larger communities be performed by the the local governments such as museums and libraries. And then the rodeo and Wild West Days were were unique events to the town that we co-sponsored and and funded ten thousand each. That's how it was defined. But I I believe you wanted to broaden that. Well, I just think it's time to to reassess how we distribute government funding. And I don't think it should be carte blanche. I think we should have a small committee that's composed of a staff member and a council member and some members of the community to create new criteria that may be more applicable and relevant to our community today. And not necessarily based on special events because we should have a separate category for special events. And we do, but it doesn't have much money in it. And I and I want to make it clear that I'm not opposing any funding to the museum. But I'm just saying that there are other very beneficial five oh one C threes in this town that should be able to apply for a grant and have it reviewed based on criteria that a committee has developed and then do a rating. And I have led that type of a committee my entire career in two million dollars worth. Forty thousand is nothing, but it still could help. It still could be dedicated in five thousand dollar increments to eight different organizations, if that's what this proposed committee decides. So I just think it needs to be reevaluated and it's time. It hasn't been as long as I've been on this committee, on this council, and I think it's time and I'm very happy to lead that effort. That would be good. And the other thing to keep in mind is we want to coordinate with the other organizations who are giving, but like the rodeo, part of the rodeo is that that committee gives back to the community and grants to organizations. So we want to make sure that we're sharing the wealth and not, you know, doubling up and whatever. So we want to
Relevant parties.
Right, right. I don't know all of them, but I do know that's a big one. So Tuanas, you know, they're doing things for the kids all over. So we just maybe we want to find an area that maybe is missed. Focus on some areas that are missed to make sure we're not duplicating this off.
Well, and that would be through the criteria.
Right, right.
Determining what our criteria is.
And I think that's what we need to do first is kind of
Well, but that would be Well, but that would be a committee.
Yeah.
Decision.
Yeah, right.
So just a small committee, five people. But representing different groups within this town.
But the, the dollar amount of funding, is that okay? I mean, we can, as long as the funding here, we can work on the criteria and still move forward with it, or do you think?
Well, we doubled it from years past. It's still not a lot. It's not overly generous. But for now, I'm okay with it.
If we don't budget it, then we can't spend it.
Right, right. That's what I'm.
So that's the issue is, if anything, I think we have to be very generous in our budget so that there is that degree of flexibility. That's a, that's a tough number.
You know, I'd love to start with a hundred thousand. But I, you know, I'll settle for forty. But I think that over time it should increase.
Yeah.
Mayor, you're always interested in departments paying for themselves. So I've done a little simple math here, figuring twenty six meetings a year. Um, and seven of us with this budget, I think each of us need to bring a check for seven hundred and two dollars and seventy five cents before each meeting and turn it into the, uh, into staff and then we can cover our expenses for the council.
Well, I, I agree with that humor. It, it's really is chicken feed. And you know, it's, it's, the, the, the town has, uh, one of the reasons for the question about are we just a digesting fire department is because we took on something that just isn't look at carefree right now. And, uh, we have some of the, some of the knock on effects are later on in the utility budgets because there were some substantial increases there to help pay for that. But, you know, the, the town really needs to do more with amenities. We need to get away from just surviving and being a a great big utility system with a really small government attached to it, kind of change that around over time and uh, twenty twenty seven's coming up where we're going to have, uh, where the well, those whiffle loans are be rolling off and will be better, nice shape. So I think it's timely and I think we have a overtime increase this.
I would like to make sure of the, for the town council, we change the verbiage like I, but you have the, the new copy. I don't know what the number is. The vice mayor can help out.
Okay, the next page is contingency. So we have a separate budget for two million that we budget for contingency. It's part of the general fund. And then next after that is public works. Kind of go over the highlights of, uh, public works. And then we'll get into, um, the special revenue and the special revenue.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. In my first hour, I will the person, so we, we divide our public works into two, uh, two divisions. Engineering, which is really composed of, um, three, me, myself and I. Uh, and then a couple of partial people. The contracts and services are the big numbers. We budget a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we always have an allowance for plan review if the if we cannot get it done in-house, then we have the ability to, um, to ship it out to get it reviewed. Uh, typically in a year, we have not used it, but depending on the amount of of public works projects that we get in, in the next year, we may require it. We have an allowance for property and rights survey because it always seems that we come up and we need to determine what, what we own. Uh, we have an update. We always update the town right away and drainage system mapping that we have set aside some of that. And we set aside contingencies for those things that we don't really know what's going to happen, but always seems to, always seems to happen with the engineering. Uh, any questions on what we have, what we budget in the engineering, the hundred thousand for the engineering public services?
So where did streetscapes go? Go here or go in the roads?
It goes in roads.
Okay.
It'll go in the roads. This is primarily if we have to do, like, one of the things that we pulled this year was we have a drainage, we, a drainage study from Surrey to Carriage on Black Mountain that we have underway to do to come up with uh, what are the quantities of flows that are coming down those streets, those four streets? So we can identify them and come up with the plans for addressing those drainage items. So we have that underway. Um, non-professional services, uh, when we put out plans or reports, we have at times we have legal advertising that we have to do. And then are, we have a very small budget for employee training and memberships, which is pretty much American Society of Civil Engineers and sometimes National Public Works Association. Any questions on the engineering budget? Okay, roads, this gets a little, this, this number gets a little bigger. We budget a percentage of the town engineers, the public works director plus one supervisor, who's now a deputy public works director, two public workers level two and three public workers level one. So a total of seven people or six and a quarter people, I believe, is the actual number. Um, on call, um, we have one person who's on call twenty four seven. Every, every day, every day of the year, we have one person, we pay twenty five dollars a day and the utilities also have that same on-call relationship, but we pay somebody to be on-call every day of the year. And that's an additional pay that we pay. Overtime, uh, we've budgeted ten thousand to cover the needs, response to storm or on-call for other road maintenance, including roadkill, down trees, cactus and accident clean. So somebody gets in a car accident, we have to, and it's not during normal working hours. We scramble somebody. We scramble the on-call person so they can come and do the cleanup, run the sweeper and that type of item. Any, any questions on the personnel? Contracts and services, we have a hundred thousand dollars budget that uh, our expenditures in twenty three have included design of pedestrian safety crossings at Hidden Valley and Hilltop and design of a pedestrian safety crossing and rapid rectangular flashing beacon at the roadhouse. Those are undergoing, those are currently happening. We will bring them to council before they go for installation. So we, we're trying to get the, um, budgeted design done this year. We'll bring it to council and say, okay, we have the design. Here's what it is. We're hopefully going to, uh, that they, it will want to improve pedestrian safety and also because it's a physical barrier, three locations in town will slow the traffic down.
So that's a different signal than what's at the roadhouse now.
Yes, it would be a much, much larger, it'd be a much larger, um, sort of a standard rectangular flashing beacon. The other thing that will happen is if the design and the reason we're having designed is because of drainage issues along Cave Creek Road uh, will be a, what they call a table, a speed table. So it comes up like a speed bump or a speed home, then it flattens across the top. And then it goes down. And so those are being designed at thirty five miles an hour. Maximum. So that forty miles an hour, somebody's going to get quite the Joel that they hit it. So we're trying to cut down the traffic.
Does that flashing sign flash both ways?
Yes. It'll be both directions so that you, you will have the eastbound traffic seeing a flashing and the westbound traffic finding receiving it.
But you know, there are three people that appear on the council that we didn't go through those engineering presentations. I, I wonder if we should have that study or some kind of familiarization.
We certainly could.
There were all kinds of, this wasn't the only option. There were a ton of options uh, presented. So about the, you know, Fairlawn Park that we talked about.
Right, there was, there were several, there were several items that were presented. What we're going by is that the, the three that we're doing right now had the highest benefit cost ratios. And the roadhouse crossing is around an eight point five. Um, you know, for every dollar it's worth, you know, for every dollar we spend is, um, eight, eight dollars and fifty cents return. So it's a, it's a pretty high cost benefit. We were, we were trying to get funding from MAG for this and that's why we, we've delayed. They weren't able to fund it this year. Uh, we had three different, uh, funding, we, these are the three projects that we proposed uh, with the rectangular flashing beacon at each one. We can't afford three rectangular flashing beacons. So what we're doing is getting one prototype design that we'll put at the roadhouse. We're going to do all three of the speed tables, providing council, uh, agrees and accepts.
Yeah.
How much is each speed table?
Each speed table, um, is going to cost us right around fifteen thousand dollars.
That, that's not the lights or more than.
The lights are more, the lights are about a hundred thousand dollars.
So what's looking at, you're looking at needing an extra two hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
Well, what we, what we put in for with the, um, what we put in for with, for the three crossings, the speed tables with all the administration that goes with having a, um, basically federal money attached to it was four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. With us paying about a hundred thousand dollars in the design costs.
As mayor. And yet with all that money, we don't have a traffic light at Schoolhouse Road. We don't even have a pilot program to see the traffic light would help. And pedestrians and cars were still pedestrians when they're hit.
Well, actually, actually, we had a study done. Um, and I believe that that's has been, has that been shared, Carrie, or not?
Oh yeah, that was back in, we did that study in two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, we did a, we did a study. The
Specifically at that intersection.
Right, the, the traffic light was warranted at the time. But it was decided at the time, and this was, you know, BH before.
Options for the, for the warrant.
Right.
The traffic signal was one option, but putting, uh, installing the larger stop signs with the larger red flashing lights met the warrant at the time.
Yes.
And that was a choice.
Later, I just still would like to agitate on the issue that, um, before we start going roundabouts or some other urban design for the small downtown area. If we could, and I had suggested to the chair, the mayor, that just a pilot program, we sold up on Carefree Highway with the water. I know how you're opposed to it, but.
No, I would, no, I would say you'd have to shoot me before we put a roundabout in.
We've been through that and that was never at the top of the options.
And I just wondered, I wanted to laugh to the chair privately that if we did a test of a fire, of a traffic light at that intersection in both directions, if the, the citizens and the people visiting the community felt that it was ineffective or bothered some, then you'd have an answer. But if you take your, because I've worked with engineers before here, if you take your traffic count existing today in twenty twenty three at that intersection, you are way above traffic flow for a four-way stop, especially a four-way stop that's not enforced ever.
We agree.
So all I'm asking is if we're going to spend a half million dollars in flashing lights at the drunk walks, excuse me, crosswalks, can we do something with the traffic light at Schoolhouse Road to see if it's feasible or desired or not desired or whatever? Schoolhouse Road is a problem and I know everybody knows it's a problem and it's been a problem for a long period of time. But we're just one fatality away from that becoming a reactive decision by the council. And if we're spending all this money to stop traffic on raised platforms in three locations, how can we not do anything at Schoolhouse and really while we're on the topic, at Spur Cross as well?
Well, the idea that we have right now, again, we're going with the, you know, we're going with what we have budgeted and what is recommended by MAG and the traffic, the two traffic studies we had done. Pedestrian safety studies that were funded by MAG for us. What we're looking at doing is ensuring that we put in those first. The reason that there, there, we're doing the three platform tables is that combined, they affect the one is it hidden, one is at, at Hidden Valley, one's at the roadhouse and one's at Hilltop, which is about where Dairy Queen and the, um, and the Kiwanis is. So that we end up with three crossings spaced between across the town. We still have the stop sign at at Schoolhouse. So, but you're right, the traffic, the amount of traffic that we have would warrant a traffic light. And the next step would be to get another traffic count done at Schoolhouse to see if we want to do that. We have a couple of issues that we have to deal with. One is that right now we are, we have one more traffic signal that we can put in and still be under our IGA with Maricopa County for the maintenance for the maintenance and operation of our traffic signals. We don't do that internally. We have a IGA with Maricopa County to maintain our traffic signals. One more, and we can do the one more, but after that they cannot, they could no longer, um, service us. And we would have to bring that service of our traffic signal maintenance in-house, which we are not equipped to do right.
But we, Mr. Chairman, we've added how many recently on Carefree Highway? Because this is not the first traffic light in Cave Creek. This is
No, no, this is, we have five, right now we have five traffic signals. We have the one at Olson, one at Cave Creek Road and Carefree Highway, one at Fifty Third Street, one at Fiftieth Street and the one at Forty Eighth Street. Those are our five.
I'm just speaking out for the residents. I'm not a bar owner. I'm not a restaurant owner. I'm just tired of having to plate chicken as are my neighbors at that intersection. And this has been going on for twenty years.
Yeah, I think as part of that, you might want to take a look at the traffic count at Spur Cross and Cave Creek Road and then also Rancho Muniyana and Cave Creek.
And also Stumbleinas. I mean, there's, there's a lot of business now at Stumbleinas and they're crossing the street without being in a crosswalk.
And there are a lot of crazy drivers.
There are. And so are I, again, um, the odds are if you can get your speed down to twenty, one out of ten, uh, one out of, one or nine out of ten will survive a twenty mile an hour. You're about fifty fifty at thirty miles an hour and you're only about, um, one out of ten are going to survive a forty mile an hour crash. And we're, we're about forty three. So yes, we do have a problem and we recognize that. The question is, can we, we're gonna, and we, we're not going to do it with law enforcement because they're not able to do it. So we have to come up with physical barriers. Would I normally recommend a speed table on a minor arterial street? It's not normally done, but yet it's come in, uh, as the best option from the pedestrian safety studies that we had.
There's no, nobody's complaining about that. I mean, we all kind of agree that needs to be done. In addition to that, can we also take a look at maybe a stoplight at, uh,
Certainly.
At Spur Cross and then also, you know, take a look at traffic counts at those other locations because quite honestly, it wouldn't hurt us to have multiple stop signs slowing people down going through town.
And that's, and that's one of the things we can look at. Um, we can revisit the, we can have the safety study that, or that traffic count study that we had done and the warrant study that we had done for the, uh, street light in, um, two thousand eighteen or seventeen? Seventeen.
Just.
We can have that updated.
If you can update how much money it would cost per stop sign here for a three-way or four-way stop, depending on.
The stop signs are actually pretty cheap. It's, but they, everyone that we do has to come, comes to council for your decision before we do it.
But if you can take and identify that, so maybe you know, before we finalize the budget, we can have those options so that we can choose to fund or not fund.
Yes, as long as we don't put in the, uh, flashing beacons at each one, the, uh, like we have at Schoolhouse now with the thirty six inch diameter and the flashing beacons, those lights are about ten thousand dollars apiece. So it's, it's just a regular stop sign.
Twenty six million dollars, but it's sitting in the piggy bank.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I really don't think we have enough allocated for this issue.
Okay.
And, and he, you will not have that information before we need to approve this budget.
True. Right now we have a hundred thousand.
It needs to be an engineered solution. We're not, we're not driving engineered in this room. Uh, I guess, unless we're all driving engineers, but, but it needs to be, they've got ways, because when you put a stop sign in, there's another risk of someone's running the stop sign. So, so there are all kinds of.
Let's figure out what the right amount is. Let's put a contingency in to say, you know, whatever that might be. Uh, if we have to do four or five different.
The, the, the nice thing about this is at the end of the day, the council always has that contingency that Mitzi just talked about that we That we have there for unexpected or unknown items. That doesn't even necessarily.
Semi expected, so maybe we figure out a lump sum to put into the contingency fund as just in case for this.
Okay.
We can do it. The thing is, we need, this needs to be engineered.
Yes.
Horseback from the council, it needs to be.
Oh, true. Three studies on this prior to hell, it's on the shelf. But I think it was a good idea that came up with, I would leave you alone on Schoolhouse if we could get the traffic light at Spur Cross. And that might be a better place in order for people to make a left-hand turn. Well, I would defer to the experts, but.
I, I, you know. Yeah, I, I think a lump sum is fine, I'm not buying off on anything until I see a engineered study.
Right, no, and, and that would be the first thing that we would do is get an engineer's study.
We are all in violent agreement.
Yeah, but the other one is, are we going fast enough in these? Two things, I guess. Is all of council comfortable with speed tables? To, to control the speed and the pedestrian crossing.
It seems like you guys decided it before we got here, so.
But that, but that says, we don't, but you're going to be voting on it, so whatever we decide the past doesn't matter. So if, if you don't have enough information.
I'd like to see, I'd like to see the study, I mean, I don't oppose speed table, but I'd like to see the, the.
We can certainly, what I can do is I can certainly have, make the, make a copy. And have a copy sent out to all the council members of both studies that we have, the phase one and the phase two.
And then if, if we need to have a session, or if the three people who haven't seen this thing need to ask questions and things. We got to arrange that so that when we get to the point of approving things, we're all operating from the same information.
Yeah, as they looked at, they looked at things, the other items they looked at were road diets. Where they would take out, where they would take out one lane in each direction. So you'd make Cave Creek a one-lane road, so you could have parking on the side. So that was looked at, but that would be all, all time, it wouldn't be just, you know, on bar nights or whatever. There were other, there were other things that they got into, bike lanes and things like that. But we can certainly make that, those two reports available.
How, how fast are the, how fast, do we have enough money to do all three speed tables expeditiously?
Yes, and we're hopefully going to, depending on the, we're having the design done now. Whether I can get them done by July first is the question, but if I get the study back and I can get it on a council agenda. For you to say. Yes, yay or no, nay.
Then, let's get everybody.
Then it's a, it's probably a, it's probably a two-week period to get them in, as long as I can get the paving contractor in and get it, and get them painted. They're not, they're not technically hard. The rapid flashing beacon is more of a long lead item that we have to determine. When that can go in, but it doesn't affect the speed table.
I do know that not everybody in the community is in favor of speed tables.
No, they weren't, you know. I, I will.
I'll never reach a hundred percent.
I will, I will quote from a former publisher. Who, when we put up the, when we put up the, you know, emergency, the things. They're slowing us down too much. So that was one of our, that was in the, that was in our local paper, that we were slowing people down too much. So you're never going to reach a hundred percent agreement. Okay. Go ahead. Okay. So we have the, then we have the, we have some money in for the consulting on the pavement management plan. Consulting on a neighborhood traffic calming plan. So one of the things that we have is that we're always at, being asked to go out and measure. Different neighborhoods and the amount of speed going through those neighborhoods and the traffic counts. So we've been looking at different traffic calming plans from around the, around the area. And one of the things that we found is that it always comes down to how, what, at what level do we pay as the town? And what level is it a nice to have, and what level do they not doing? So we are putting together that plan, and that will come to council, hopefully, when we're done with budget.
Help that's not those little white bumps.
No.
Because those are completely ineffective.
No, it's not, it would be, it would be in areas where if a neighborhood wanted to put in a speed bump. That would be one of the things that would, there are certain criteria, we would set the criteria, we'd set measurable. Predictable criteria that would allow, allow it to happen and at what level the town pays for them. And at what level the community that agrees to pay for them, the community, the affected community. So those are, that's probably about eighty-five percent, we have to have some internal meetings on them. And make sure we're agreeing, and then we're, we'll be ready to bring it to council.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to check, we have seven speed bumps and under one mile to have a ranch old stage.
Yes, that's a private road and those.
You want to experience the delight of seven speed bumps.
Yes, it's not, they're not wonderful.
I said with me as we drive over them.
Are you recommending them, Tom?
No, sir, that was, that was a goat trail when I moved there, we were happy to have the guy with the bulldozer. And now we have a road association and a paved road and seven speed bumps and less than a mile.
Yes.
So it's, it's an option for those who want to do.
Are they popular?
Only for people who moved here in the last few years.
Thank you, yeah. No, their, their speed bumps are probably going to be fifty percent, fifty percent, but that's why the criteria has an agreement level. That has to be met, a signed petition agreement level of those being affected. And then a agreement to pay if they, if they meet the minimum warrant, but they don't meet the. They don't meet the ultimate warrant where the town would come into pay.
Little personal story, Rancho Manganas just went through this whole conversation. And it was about up or down.
Yes.
Speed bumps, and by one vote, we do not have speed bumps.
Yes, like I said, it's about a fifty fifty, and it requires more than that.
It's why I love Cave Creek.
Okay, for twenty-four, we have the hundred thousand is right now, update Fifty-third Street plans. A Royal Road right-of-way acquisition assistance, because we have a small piece that we would need to put in a Royal Road. Design of drainage facilities, Black Mountain and other locations, pedestrian safety design. And then miscellaneous engineering survey designs and studies, which could include the streetscapes.
Could, could.
Design.
Streetscapes are fairly quick, the, the hard part's going to be putting water in.
The question is that we, this is, we're looking right now at four options that we're looking for the streetscape.
Are you talking medians?
Medians, the medians.
It's just means, and it's some areas where we have the, the right-of-way putting trees or something that gives shade.
Right.
You walk down the.
So we are looking at options, some of them are, some of them are cactus, some of them are cactus-based. Some of them are putting, the ultimate one would be putting irrigation in the medians, but we have no irrigation remaining in the medians. That was all taken out many years ago. So the question is, do we put in ca, do we put in a cactus type? Do we do one median at a time and do it right, and then move on to another one? So one per year, these are options that we're looking at, and then we want to present to the council once we, once we get a better handle on it. If we put in trees, that would need irrigation, and that also is a use of water that we'd have to make sure that we get the water. The water meters and everything else that we would need, so. Cutting into the, cutting into the street to run our lines, and then the maintenance of the, maintenance of the irrigation systems is. A pretty major undertaking. The other one is to establish cactus, takes about two years, we could run the water truck. And make sure that they get watered on a schedule as an interim. But again, that's not something that you're going to do with a, with a tree until it's established. So the other problem that we have currently is that, right now, I don't think we could plant anything in there. Because our maintenance has been done using a pre-emergent and a weed killer type of application. So that anything we do to escape the medians is going to need to be an excavation. And an import type of app, application. So we would like to finish looking at these options, run them by a couple of experts in. What we can do, you know, reasonably, and then get back to council with that.
Could we also do something to take a look? I know as Councilman Arton, as mentioned before, there are gas lines that run parallel to the street. Would it be possible to take a look at those, if those gas lines are still there? And, and what we might be able to do to, to do dark sky compliant lighting using the gas.
Well, we can look at that, the other one we're looking at is solar LED. That would have the same effect, or have the, have the.
I think we're looking for, for though, the, the gas lamps, because it goes off a certain, certain aura, kind of western looking.
You know, we're, we're going to have to talk about that, I'm not sure I agree with that, so.
Yeah, again, it's the, it's the metering.
Everything going on in the world, you know, gas lighting is very inefficient, LED lighting is very efficient. So if it's, it's an ambiance thing. We have to think about that one.
Where's the line item for this?
We don't have a line item for, the streetscaping, we, that's right now. It's under miscellaneous engineering, under the projected expenditures for the design. And then we do not, we will work out a item for the implementation of it.
Have we considered just outsourcing this? We have two different landscaping companies in this town. Why wouldn't we just professionally have it done, rather than rely on our own crew, which is very limited in scope?
Yeah, that would, that's one of the things that we're, that we're looking at. Again, we have one median that's maintained and sponsored by Desert Foothills Landscaping. And they, they are the one right in front of their offices. And it's actually a pretty nice-looking median, but at the same time, it doesn't meet some of the criteria. That other people in Cave Creek want, which is a more natural median. And not, you know, it has more of the Disney desert features that some people don't like. So again, it's a mixture between, you know, between a rugged and planted. And, you know, and then, you know, other type of material. So again, we need a criteria that we want to meet, and that's part of what we want to present to the council.
Well, I would like to get an estimate on costs to have a professional landscaping crew do this work. We can talk more about that when Lucas back, he'll be here on Thursday. We could talk about that because he's familiar. That seed.
Yeah.
He know, he, I'll tell you, he knows what the cost is, but.
Yes, he, he and I have talked, but he's been more involved with the.
Hopefully, the landscaping companies in our town would be amenable to helping us control those costs. And he, that's why I said, he has an idea of the cost and could firm that up. Okay, we'll talk about it on Thursday.
Are boulders sometimes used? They don't take water.
No, boulders could be used, that's part of the landscaping or streetscaping that could be done. Yes. Rocks, we have plenty of rocks, our boulders. There, those are things that could be, could be used, but again, some of the items that we, that we look at is traffic safety. And we had, we just replanted thirty-three cactuses, one of our landscape companies did it for us. And we've already lost three of them to motors. I don't think we'd lose a boulder, but we.
You might lose a lawsuit.
Yes.
We lost three cactus to motorists?
Yes, on medians already.
Three out of thirty-three already gone.
Are we, are we charging them?
When we find out who did it, then, then we do go after their. Right now, we're, right now, we're trying to replace a welcome to Cave Creek sign.
Yeah.
That's got.
Silver horse.
Yeah.
I thought the horse got.
No, the horse, no, the horse is still there, horse is still there.
Oh.
Two of them.
But it's the welcome to Cave Creek sign that was built by the Boy Scouts that got taken.
That horse got knocked out.
Not yet.
Yeah, it's way up on a pedestal.
Let's see, any more questions on the design? Electric trash, yes, I know. Okay. Electric trash, we just adjusted to expectations, non-professional services, we've included an allowance for temporary labor. Drug testing and fees for permits and other agencies, including dust control, maintenance. Repair and patching of pavements and concrete in non-herf areas. Include, includes cost to Maricopa County for maintenance of the traffic signals. That we have to pay every year, it's about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars that we have to pay to Maricopa County.
For one signal?
No, for our five.
Five, okay.
For our five signals to replace bulbs, adjust the cones and everything else. Equipment leases twenty-five thousand, that includes thirteen, thirteen hundred per month for the video monitoring of Thirty-second Street. Leaving to, leading to Cava Springs, where we put the gate up. And we did that for the neighbors that were out there that were complaining about. And the potential fire by people going up there, so we put up the gate, and then they were going around it. So we've got a video monitoring, we pay thirteen hundred dollars a month for the video monitoring. It notifies the sheriff's office if somebody goes in there, so it works out well. And then rental of other equipment that we need for individual projects that are owned by the town. Employee training and memberships, not really a lot, just to, we have to do stormwater management, safety and first aid. Supplies, includes the normal and seasonal supplies. Includes our dust palliative, which has gone up considerably, our road lock, which is twelve thousand per load that, which is applied. Four to five times per year, runs about seventy-five thousand dollars a year now for our dust palliative for our unpaid roads. Weed spray and pre-emergent, about nine thousand dollars per application currently. And we're doing about three applications a year, so it's about twenty-seven thousand of that, hundred and thirty in supplies. Fuel and oil, anyone who's put gas in the tank knows that's going up, and so right now we've budgeted forty-two thousand dollars for that for the next year. Based on the first seven months of the year. And. That's basically the major items except for the capital. So the other shoe drops.
The capital expenditures projects that are in there are listed on the next page by project.
Yeah, so that includes the, that includes the Fifty-third and Barbie Hidden Valley. And there's a list of projects that we plan on doing. Again, after our meeting, we decided to try and make the, try to squeeze, finish the, finish the capital improvements by twenty-twenty-six. So we squeezed them into, to finish by twenty-twenty-six. And that's running about, including her, around one point nine million a year.
Can we, is there material there we can use on upper Spur Cross Road?
What the.
The milling.
The millings, if we get millings, we can, we are currently, the millings that we just used on. Morning Star were actually compliments of the town of Carefree. They didn't have any place to take it, so we took it, and then we've been using it on our roads. So we, we've been, we've got a pile of millings that we've been using on our roads, and so, and we actually did put some on Spur Cross Road.
There's a portion of where it used to be dirt that really has stood up well, and then other portions have not.
Yeah, part of the problem we have on Spur Cross is part of it was a chip sealed. And that's, that's what's breaking down in our, in our, we, it won't adhere. So the millings don't adhere to the chip seal, so we may have to get that re-chips. Any questions on the, on the projects that we have, and they were identified within the pavement management plan? That we had done in August of twenty-twenty.
This is a, this is pretty incredible that in the same year we were first full year of fire, we're also getting back in sync on paving. At about four times what we normally spend.
Right, because normally we just pay her. Normally, we just, the last few years while we were trying to figure out what the fire would cost us. We were only using our her funds, which are dedicated only for road projects, and that's about three hundred and eighty thousand a year.
Any questions for Hal?
Hey, Helen, the capital expenditure by project, the last two on there are both edge mill and overlay. One of them's four thousand, the other one's a hundred and fifty thousand, it's just the, the size of work, or is that a?
Yes, it's, it's the size of work, it's the size of length identified within this study. What I did was I told. What I did was I took whatever they had in here and then realized that they left out things like mobilization. So what we're going to do is we're going to bundle the edge mill and paving together. So we only pay one mobilization.
Okay, yeah.
But how I think the Highland Road, the other part of that, I think it's ninety six thousand is included in her.
Oh, that's what we did. Okay, we moved it to her. That's right. I forgot that that was a break. So we have it in the her funds. We put the projects into her first and then into the general fund.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next budget is special events. The we primarily budget for the traffic control and law enforcement for the events. And the town marshal can cover the details for the rodeo and the parades that we have scheduled.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, it's going to be very hard for me to have to follow what was just before me.
He used all your time, by the way.
Do you have any questions? Just make it easy. You have any questions? I'll answer whatever you have. And I promise I'll be quicker than Hal. No offense, engineers.
Things that never get cheaper over time. Why is yours going down five hundred bucks?
I love this guy. Next question.
So the only special events that we're currently sponsoring are the rodeo and the rodeo parade.
So Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, typically we also have a homecoming parade. I don't know what's going on with CCUSD, but they didn't have their parade this year. But from what I understand is coming back online. So we do budget for it, obviously. Last thing we want to do is say no, we're not gonna. Excuse me.
But no more taste of Cave Creek. Would that have fallen under this budget in years past?
In years past, of course.
So we don't foresee ever hosting that again. No, the the Stagecoach Village has formed five oh one C three and they are interested in putting on that event. Oh, and we said we would cooperate with them in that we would loan them some of the equipment that we used and, you know, those kinds of things and whatever, whatever else. Well, in future years, they could apply for a grant to the community grants. Good idea.
Like what you think?
If there are five oh one C three, they would be eligible.
It's true.
So, okay, so that's the future potentially of the Taste of Cave Creek. Okay, well, that's a good solution.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Council, just to summarize quickly, the where we are ended up on the general fund. And the legal expenditure limit for the general fund that was adopted with the fiscal year twenty three budget was fifteen million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred, which included expenditures and transfers out. What we are proposing for fiscal year twenty four preliminary budget that staff has put together for today is seventeen million, four hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and eighty one dollars. So the difference that we have between where we were last year in twenty three and where we are today for twenty four is a positive difference of two million, ninety two thousand, one hundred and eighty one dollars, of which that that difference is represented by an additional one point one million, seven hundred and six thousand, six hundred dollars in public works for road improvements and an additional eight hundred and sixty thousand in the fire station capital expenditures in twenty four. Those two total the two two million, thirty thousand, six hundred dollars, which represents the majority of the difference between where we are between twenty three and twenty four. Any questions on that? Because we're going to move on to the special revenue funds, which are the next set of handouts that are clipped together in your packet. And we have we've got five special revenue funds. The first one is perf, which is the highway user revenue fund. And for this fund, we've got vehicle license tax that comes in as revenue for this fund and we have budgeted capital improvements for roads for five and the amount of five hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. We've set aside the ten percent contingency that's required by town financial policies of thirty eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty eight dollars. And we are there's been some fund balance that has not that's remained in the her fund and we're putting that to use also in twenty twenty four for our roads and projects that are coming in twenty four to zero back out the her fund balance because what comes into her, we should be spending. We've just not spent all of that. We've had a fund balance remaining in there. So we're pulling that fund balance forward to spend in twenty four. And then in the capital expenditure summary box on the her page are the projects that are slated to be spent with her funds in twenty four. Any questions on perf? And the next special revenue fund is the spur cross fund. And with this fund, we've got absent sales tax that's coming in. We've got two hundred and sixteen thousand budgeted for Maricopa County to run the park for us and our transfers out of spur cross to zero spur cross fund out with the hundred thousand going to trails in the general fund and the remaining balance getting split half to general fund and half to the water infrastructure fund, which takes for across to an ending fund balance at zero as well. Questions on spur cross? No. The next special revenue fund is the Parks and Trails Fund. This is an older fund that was, I think, funded by the development impact fees, which we do not do anymore. These are leftover funds. These are being budgeted in twenty four to be spent, our leftover funds, and this fund will go away after fiscal year twenty four. Any questions on Parks and Trails?
Well, and we'll see what how those funds are going to be used.
I'm sorry, I.
How will we see how those funds will be used? So that's trails money, if I'm getting this right.
This budgeted, it's budgeted to be spent. Those revenues will be spent first, and that would be in development services for the trails where the expenditure is.
So it's going from spur cross to development.
No, this isn't spur cross. This is a separate fund that was a development fee and its remaining funds that we don't collect development fees anymore. So there's that balance of just over thirty five thousand that will be used first to zero out this account towards expenses that are in the trails program.
The next special revenue fund is the open space acquisition fund. This this fund has a fund balance that's in it. The expenditure that shown estimated for twenty twenty three was the purchase of the thirty acres at spur cross for this year. The current year for fiscal year twenty three, there's nothing budgeted to be spent in this fund for fiscal year twenty four. And the estimated balance that's to be remaining at the end of twenty three, rolling into twenty four is a million, four oh two, six thirty seven.
So I have a question on the the state land, the land states, the loans that we've annexed. Right, we have that annexation agreement. My understanding is we have to buy that open land, correct?
It's first right of approval and we're going to have a presentation on that in May first. What what Davis remember? It's in May, one of the May meetings. We're going to go over that. But the whole the whole issue with the facts about that land. But we have the first right to purchase it. But if we don't purchase it.
Understand.
Yeah.
Have we started talking to the state about how much it might cost us? Because they're looking at probably starting to release some of that land in the next couple of years.
I I'm going to have Luke talk to the because he has all the details on that on Thursday.
He can talk about that.
Separately from that, though, even though nothing is budgeted to spend this year, that doesn't necessarily mean that if an opportunity presents itself, that we couldn't use some of these funds, correct?
You would have to use expenditure authority from within the budget as it's adopted.
Oh. How did we fund the three hundred and sixty three thousand? If that had.
We budgeted for that. We knew that was coming. It takes time for these things to come down the pike. So and so we knew that there was an estimated cost. So we budgeted for that as for an expenditure. May first, okay, May first is a presentation on the state trust lands. But we can talk about that Thursday when Luke is back.
And then the last special revenue fund is the grant fund. And we've got different grants that we've budgeted for related to general government. The first one is the lottery funds that we then turn around agreement to foothills caring corp.
I believe.
Caring for, yeah.
Yeah, first ones for caring club.
Yeah, and there's four hundred thousand in for a grant that Hal will be applying for related to the mag pedestrian traffic safety study. There's the seventy thousand to the Arizona State Parks Grant for trails. I think that's for and then we put in community grants in there as well as some miscellaneous grants. And that is, we we put that in to appropriate for it in case those grants become available for us to apply. And we actually do receive, we have expenditure authority to to use them. But that's a net in and out revenues and expenditures to zero in the grant fund. Any questions on France?
That's all the special revenues. And now we have a couple of capital project funds to go over. Required to break those out. Oh, sorry. I got talking and clicked first. Thank you.
Okay. And so the first capital improvement fund is the Cape Creek Water Infrastructure Fund. This is the the fund that receives the half of what's left in the spur cross fund. Half of it, we do the hundred thousand out. The other half goes to general fund and the second half goes to the water infrastructure fund. So that is the money coming into this fund and there are, we've budgeted no expenditures out of this fund for use in twenty twenty four. But this is the fund too that money comes out of if Cape Creek Water, it runs in the deficit. This is the fund that would transfer to Cape Creek Water, but for fiscal year twenty four, Cape Creek Water is in the black. So transfer will be estimated to be made. Any questions on water infrastructure fund? And then the last capital improvement project fund is the open space and trails development impact fee fund. This is a this is leftover monies similar to the other one for the development impact fees. There's a twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty six dollars of funds remaining. Those are proposed to be budgeted in fiscal year twenty four. And again, those will be spent in twenty four and this fund will go to zero and go away. Questions on capital improvement? We're going to move on to the utility funds.
You, Mayor and Council. To start off, he's talking about the utilities department has still continued our focus on on working on preventative maintenance. Sadly, we're still having to deal with a lot of unplanned repairs in the system and but that is something that is actually lessened since I've been here in the four years I've been to town. We've had some as a carried indicated beginning, we've had some staffing challenges. This year, we've had a couple of projects that we've had to delay and not get up to speed, not get done just because we've had staffing changes, which meant staff, new staff members had to get up for speeds. We weren't able to get some stuff. I'm going to talk about just in general stuff. I was one of the specific funds. So we the Carefree Disconnect Work to give council an update is nearing completion. The next big cut over will be April twentieth. That's going to involve about a hundred and fifty customers. So after that cut over, there'll be five hundred and fifteen customers of the five hundred and fifty have been cut over. So the last few months will last few will actually take the longest time as if you've been on Cave Creek Road, you'll notice the crossings actually occurring north of Carefree Highway are are being done to provide the commercial development across the street, Lowe's, CVS and the store class with their new services. And there's actually three other crossings planned north of there to finish off the disconnects. We are working with the City of Phoenix Interconnect funding. We actually have a project meeting with WIFA, with a board meetings next week. So we're going to move forward with that. Doing the request to get funding put in place for that. We continue to have a focus on overall water resources. Part of that that we started the integrated master plans. We're looking at all all the systems. It's not just the water system, the delivery system, but we're looking at wastewater and water resources in general and reclaiming the water in the system. And you've done a lot of a lot of projects this year. A lot of stuff actually got done at the wastewater treatment plant, inlet screens, grants, or the great units, the irrigation system. And then I'll get into the specifics on desert or we'll start with wastewater fund forty. And you'll notice as we go through it, there some of the employee tables just adjusted a little bit. We've been tweaking as I've been here, just some of the differences between where we charge our staff to just minor things. But one of the biggest things you'll see in all the funds is actually the wastewater, the personnel costs have gone up as was indicated at the beginning of the session. You know, it's been challenging to keep and retain staff and find staff. And we've actually had to do things like adjust our rates in order to make ourselves competitive with the market right now. So Personnel costs have gone up as I was indicated at the beginning of the session, you know, it's been challenging to keep and retain staff and find staff, and we've actually had to do things like adjust our rates in order to make ourselves competitive with the market right now, so. With that, on the wastewater side of, again, the personnel costs have gone up, we actually had some loss in staff this year, so that's partly why we're we're below budget. But that's because we we had savings sadly because we were had vacancies.
Didn't you have to hire consultants to fill those roles?
Before this fiscal year, we actually had hired consultants on the wastewater side. We're actually currently have consultants hired on the on the water side. We've lost. Two staff members that are the water treatment plant, so we've had, you know, we're getting close to the summer times who've actually brought consultants in and contractors to help fill the voids that we have, so as we recruit, so. So it has been a challenge for us in trying to figure out the contract mechanisms, etc., that we put in place. You'll see that especially on the water, Cape Creek Water side, the the other professional services costs this year has gone up considerably because that was how we were paying for the contractual services.
I have a question for you. In other municipalities, are these positions unionized?
Some municipalities, not all towards the valleys, it differs, so need a city.
Can you, do you know if employees prefer to be unionized or not?
No, never asked a question specifically. I've worked in a new, in a new, when I was in City of Peoria, that was a unionized group, but Avidale we were not, so.
Just wondering if that's a factor in why people stay or leave.
Yeah, wish I knew what that was. Point a couple of things, you might see some new things that we've added to all three enterprise funds as we go through. The contract services and commodities, professional attorney services, we added as a specific line item. That's largely, you know, we're paying for Michelle Van Queethen and Bill Sims as we deal with stuff moving forward, we've we've added that as a separate line item before it was just getting wrapped up in professional services. We broke out computer software, we have specific software needs in the utilities department, so while general software is paid for out of the general fund. We pay for things like the the SCADA software, we have the Wonderware programs, Win nine one one, which is the dialout system, so each of the enterprise funds has its own licensing. And so in service, we actually have to pay the fees on that. We also have a a mission skate, mission skate a system, which is on top of especially the Cape Creek Water sites. As we pay for fees for that, so you'll see that broken out because it used to be paid for out of subscriptions, so we moved that into a specific line item. Another thing that was something we did to actually trying to help retain staff, you'll see a transportation mileage reimbursement line item. So what we were finding is people were being put on call as as Hal indicated, we have four on call people at all times in utilities. And when they get a call back in, they would actually have to come in, we don't allow staff members to do take home vehicles, so we've now allowed them to charge the the federal per diem rate for mileage, so they, when they get brought back in, they're using a personal vehicle, they're getting compensated. We had a case where supervisor actually got called in on a Saturday for three separate on calls and they they lived on the outserts of the one mile or the one hour limit for us, so they spent six hours driving back and forth all day long with no compensation. You know, with the gas prices, so that's something we've done. We've also tried to increase things like the clothing allowance that we give to our our staff members again, little little perks that we can do to help help staff members hopefully retain them too. So if there's any specifics, I know we're running long here, I I'll point out, but there's nothing in the wastewater fund, right now, we are going to be in the in the red a little bit, there's going to be a transfer in. We we talked about that when we did the rate model last year and got that adopted, that it's going to take a few years, I think it was projected to take the four, the five years of the rate study to actually get us to the point where we're breaking even in in the operation of the system, but we're starting to move that direction, so. In addition to that, we're we're moving ahead with a progressive capital program and and repair program on the system overall.
Are we bringing in more people in the wastewater treatment system?
Not that many, so it really comes down to the the availability of sewer lines and and, you know, we force people, and that's something we're actually going to discuss with the master plan is, you know, how can we either encourage people or can we start extending through extending lines, then you you require them to connect. It's actually coming up as part of our water resource discussions because in a lot of municipalities, they can rely on the reclaimed water from the effluent, treat effluent as actually a water resource. You know, most of our water for both of our water systems, especially Desert Hills, where we have no collection system on the Cape Creek system. And we have, once the disconnects done, we'll have about twenty four hundred customers on the water system, but we only have nine hundred that are actually on the wastewater system returning water to us, so it's a one way for us for the water resources, so.
Just want to point out that between the half cent sales tax and the amount of money being transferred in for the general fund to support the deficit in the wastewater, it's two and a half million dollars. Worth of subsidies going to wastewater, which has remained constant for as long as I've been.
Yeah, I'll I'll just take this time to point out a few things like, things like our professional services that helps pay for, right now, we're using it for, well, the wastewater fund, water fund to pay for some operational supports, but we. That pays for our lab fees, we don't have certified labs, we actually have to bring it outside, we have a company EMS, they've been doing our mapping systems, we actually pay for it out of that. And we pay for our ADQ fees out of that. This year, we expect the, you'll see the APS rates have gone up, so it's ten percent starting January twenty fourth, January twenty twenty four. And then sites for that, you know, we do have a increase in our risk assessment insurance that was ten percent this year, so we we pay proportional share of that. But nothing major, I think, right now, we're trying to, you know, to do a good job with what we have, it's really the staff resources gone up, that's just a fact of life, and we're trying to manage and stay with our means at this point, always a waste water system. Any questions?
Sean, excuse me, under salaries and wages, the total amount covers all twenty employees under underwater utilities?
If you look into wastewater system, we actually.
This is just wastewater.
Yes, we we fund four point four FTEs.
Okay.
You'll see that on the second page, the table on the wastewater fund.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just to quickly summarize wastewater and the fund summary that's on the the bottom of the second page. The operating revenues include for fiscal year of the twenty twenty three estimated include the new rates for the second half of fiscal year twenty three that council passed in December, the beginning of December. And the twenty four proposed budget includes a full year of. The new rates. So the revenue is estimated or proposed for the budget at three point four million dollars. We've got total expenditures coming out of proposed to come out of four million three thirty one, which leave, which then leaves wastewater in the red eight hundred and sixty five thousand six hundred and sixty one dollars, so that's what's. Requested to be transferred in. From the general fund. To balance wastewater.
Okay. So we'll move on to Cape Creek water, so unless there's any questions on the wastewater system. So I'll start off with sort of the bad news is with the loss of customers moving forward, we actually, last year's budget, we didn't account for any revenues because it was two years ago that we actually did settlement with Carefree. But we are losing about nineteen percent of our customer base, but part of that was adjusted for when we did the rate study this this last year that got passed by council, so. It is reducing our overall, the water demands for the summer, which is 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 one nicety I'll take from that. Because our actual, our cap water costs are going up and so is our electrical costs in the system, but it's it's a big hit having losing the revenue, but we actually are sort of balancing that out with the rates that are, council has adopted.
John, is some of that wheeling water?
Right now, the wheel agreement is still in place, Carefree has not made a request for next year, right now. So, you know, we do anticipate because there actually is an interconnect site that has been built as part of the disconnected, it got moved up to the new border on Bella Vista and Cape Creek Road, so. But we did anticipate that there was going to be, or is it, it shows up in the revenue stream. Where is it? Yeah, the water usage care free support line down. If we do move forward with the wheeling, that's where that will show up in the future. Similar story on personnel cost, the the cost of positions have gone up, so as we've been filling, we've had to increase the, we've had to adjust a few ranges as we've planned and done recruitments. So we built into the proposed budget. Not only the. The cost increased, it was talked about by Kerry, but actually also increase ranges for to us to entice and retain staff members, so that's just something we've had to deal with as we've had vacancies and we've looked out. Even it's it's only been about eighteen months since we did the the salary survey, we found that we've already fallen behind in some cases, and a lot of other jurisdictions, we're all fighting for the same pool of people, the same pool of licensed operators. So we we thought we're doing well and actually growing some of our own in that when the plant was reclassified a few years ago of our treatment plant, we actually could retain some staff. And allow them time to actually get their certifications, sadly, as soon as they became certified, they left, so. Even though we gave them rate increases there, they they leveraged that in other municipalities, so. That's one of the issues that we're dealing with, and that's why you'll see the professional services and their contracts and services this year is is we're we're over budget. Because that's what we're paying for the contractual services to help us out to to keep the system running, especially on the water side, the water shooting side. Electrical has gone up, so there's a small rate increase about half a year's worth of rate increases. Just trying to look at this is some significant things. In general, we're just trying to 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 keep the status quo, we obviously do have a revenue stream that is dipping because of the loss of customers, but then we have also increased the rates which help offset that. But in general, we're in good shape, I think, in Cape Creek Water System.
So so the cap water went up to seven eighteen thousand dollars in twenty. Twenty twenty one, it was four hundred thousand, in spite of the loss of all those customers are still. Seventy five percent higher water, so.
Yeah, the cost.
Cost is really.
Yeah.
Skyrocketed.
So it's two factors because the the actual cost of the water has gone up per acre foot, so we pay two fees for when we, the CFP water, we actually pay for the. The capital charges on all the water and then the delivery water, so up till last year, we actually didn't take all our water and deliveries because a lot of it went by the town. So now we started banking this past year, this past budget, we started banking, and every year, we actually have to continue to pay the capital and deliver and capital charges on that water in the ground, so it 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 will increase to grow, but then we're actually getting long term water resources for the town, so.
So is the water banking fees included in this lineup?
It is, so we've we've budgeted for this full year of all allocation, right now, our allocation has dipped down, we used to have the two thousand six hundred and six acre feet of municipal industrial water, we're now at two thousand two hundred and twenty eight acre feet. But the, we're actually capturing it with this current fiscal year because the transfer occurred, actually just about a month or so ago. We worked with Carefree and Carefree said, since they didn't need all that water, they would allow us to bank it, so we actually banked a little bit more than we anticipated this year, so that's what's included in this year's budget, next year, we still have to pay that ongoing capital charge, but. It's not much, it's only like thirty or forty dollars per acre foot to actually have it stored in the ground. But every year that will grow as we generate the storage credit, so in my mind, that's a good growth for us to have to have that storage of water. Nothing else really jumps out at me, our chemical costs have stayed, you know, we actually have seen increases in the chemical cost, but because of the loss of eighteen percent of our customer base, I think we're going to use less this year, so that's how we budgeted that. So we're, this upcoming proposed budget is a bit of a flux here because we flux, we're trying to figure out what everything will cost after everything's done with the transition, we've had. The transition went a little slower than we anticipated this year, which gave us some additional revenue, it also meant we had some additional costs for running the system, but so next year, we'll have a better understanding of like, cost per thousand for for usage and stuff like that, I'll set up. Any questions on the Cape Creek Water System budget? You will see a small increase in the FT account. Point at one thing that it's from from two things, we actually had used to have a management analyst position, it was actually funded in all three enterprise funds. Sadly, we lost that position, but the good thing is that that person actually stayed in the town and became an accountant, so now we're jointly funded in that position with finance, so. We're we're funding thirty percent of that position and seventy percent is being funded by the general fund. But we're taking the, we're reclassifying what was a management analyst position into a civil engineer, project management, project manager, we're doing it this cap, this fiscal year, so you'll see it moving forward. As a new position, we've worked out a job description, we'll hopefully get that advertised here shortly, so. Because of the number of projects we have, I think that's good, you can see we have a pretty, pretty aggressive capital program, a lot of things to get done and just even operational projects, so. You know, we could use some help to get stuff done, be more efficient.
And just to, are you done, Sean? Okay, just to recap then, on Cape Creek Water, the fund summary at the bottom of the second page, so for twenty twenty four. Cape Creek Waters proposing taken revenue of almost six point five million dollars. The expenditures that are budgeted are at eleven million four twenty five, so Cape Creek Water ends up. In the red by almost five million dollars of which. In the one time sources, we've got in their grant proceeds of the three million, which represents the two and a half million that we've applied for for the congressionally. Directed spending through our senators and representative offices and five hundred thousand for the water smart grant that we still haven't heard on as well, so. The net result for Cape Creek Water for twenty twenty four ends up. In the red about a million nine. And it gets offset by the three and a half million that's sitting in fund balance at beginning fund balance. And that, the money that's sitting in beginning fund balance rolls forward from this fiscal year, and that includes the almost two million in state local fiscal recovery funds that we've received this year but have not spent. So that's the offset there in fund balance, and then of the million six that's sitting in ending fund balance for Cape Creek Water. The WIFA reserve requirement is the one point three million, which leaves Cape Creek Water with a. Positive ending fund balance of two hundred and seventy six thousand one twenty six.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Will we get that back, though, when those assets are actually put on the books, or that, that ton balance go up because when the assets, when the assets actually hit the books?
So yet, when the assets hit the books, the expenditure just comes off and then the asset gets recorded, but it's.
So the fund balance will rise.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we've taken the two hundred and seventy six thousand, I should also mention, that's in the ending fund balance for Cape Creek Water, and although not required by our financial policies, have put that into a contingency. So it's appropriated and available to be spent if needed, but that will of course have to be taken to council to spend at that point.
Yeah, and Miss mentioned the water smart grant, so you might notice in the capital programs, this last time we presented the capital program on the on the Cape Creek Water System is that. The cost of the the meter replacement program, that's actually the water smart grant is actually the application that we did to the EPA to to help us jointly fund the the meter change out program. It was originally supposed to be issued last year, so it would have hit last year, so it requires us to do a fifty percent match. We expect this to over half, we put in for half million dollars, that was the authority, we had a hundred thousand dollars this past fiscal year, we're supposed to have three hundred thousand, which would give us our match. We actually had to condense that into one year because we anticipate we'll get it, but we'll have to spend it right away, so should be a good thing because then we'll change all our meters in one year instead of. Moving on to Desert Hills Water System, I think the system overall is in good shape, the biggest. Change to that is because when we is the 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 cost of the CAP water and and what's going on at that system. We do have the new subcontract for for non-Indian agricultural water in in Desert Hills. And this past year, we actually were paying for that fee, there's the ongoing capital cost, so we've done two payments and we've got three left at about a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars per year, and then the full payment of both the capital, ongoing capital and delivery costs for that water, but that is a water resource. That we secured for Desert Hills to help offset the municipal industrial water supplies that we've been transferring through them since the town actually acquired the system. And we've built into the line item budget, the the cost for them to pay for that all. And we've built into the line item budget, the, the cost for them to pay for that all that water. And then the big change is, is the bulk water with this year's rates. What we did is we have Desert Hills paying for the water that's being used from Cave Creek and like a typical, just sort of a wholesale rate. They're actually with the rate model and council agreed to this was that we're transferring some of the future debt services on the Cape Creek Water System where in the past, two thousand and seven, when the, the big capital improvements were being done in the, in the town. They were actually jointly split. So there's actually two loans for the large capital improvement project that was done in two thousand and six, seven or seven and eight in the town. This case, we're actually going to take out one loan moving forward to do the improvements to the Cape Creek Water System, but we're splitting the debt service between the two funds and we're actually using the, the bulk water rate to do that transfer of funds between the two. So it becomes a, a cost expenditure to Cape Desert Hills Water and a revenue or to Desert Hills Water and a revenue to Cape Creek Water. So. We have adjusted our, our, our salaries a little bit between the agencies before we charged some of the water treatment plant operators. But it didn't seem fair to charge the, the staff members there and do the bulk water rate. So we did still keep the supervisor partly funded, the water treatment supervisor, because the goal is that that's when that position is filled, we'll actually have, request that person to be the operator of record for Desert Hills. Desert Hills does have a treatment site because we do have two, three wells enter the system and we actually have a arsenic treatment system. So we actually have to have a, a treatment operator record and a distribution operator record. We use the same person for distribution. We'll use the same person for the treatment for side of it. Besides for that, again, same sort of challenges we've had, I mentioned before, the water rates going up or sorry, the electric, electricity, we anticipate going up. We've budgeted for that. We've expect, expect a little bit more chemical usage. We've actually, on the good news on Cape Creek Desert Hills, we're, we're trying to utilize the wells more. So. Part of the reason in the, for the increase in the chemical usages is the higher usage of the wells out there. So, which means less transfer of Cape Creek Water into the system. So. The well water is the most cost effective out there. We can't supply all the water needs by the wells, but we're trying to utilize them as best we can. We're making operational changes to try to do that best we can.
Probably awkward for there we are.
Surprisingly, not bad. Two of the three wells are going too good, which are two lower production wells, which is the two wells that go into our ten street site. But the, the, the largest production well, which is at Joy Ranch and Third Avenue, actually has been stable for groundwater. So we think it's some of the recharging that, that's being done in Anthem. So we're getting some benefit out there. So we'll take advantage of it. You know, with that, there's, I don't, there's not significant changes. So unless council has any questions, this interest of time.
This is financial, but we're five hundred and fifty, five hundred and thirty three thousand dollars in the red on Desert Hills. Are you reading that right?
Uh, no.
Oh, good.
So, um, let me just summarize. Are you looking at, were you looking at the fiscal year twenty three estimated column or the proposed?
Oh, that, that, oh, that's the change. Excuse me. The wrong number. Why don't you tell me?
Okay. Okay. So I'm on the second page under the Desert Hills Water System Fund Summary Report. For fiscal year, I'll start with fiscal year twenty three. The revenue Desert Hills was taking in was three point nine million dollars. They had expenditures of three point nine million dollars. So they were in the black. Twenty two thousand eight hundred and sixty six dollars. They had transfer in of five hundred and thirty three thousand one seventy five, which took the net result in twenty twenty three to five hundred and fifty six thousand sixty one dollars. There had started the fiscal year with a negative fund balance of eighty nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. For fiscal year twenty three. It required a transfer of funds and those transfers were not made. So as Desert Hills ends up in the positive, they will need to pay the general fund back for the eighty nine thousand four hundred and seventy dollars transfer that did not get made for twenty two. We will true that up with council at the end of fiscal year twenty three and we'll just do twenty two and twenty three together.
So the, the rate increase is, tell me if this is right, the rate increase got them to the point where they're covering all their cost in the town. Okay, Creek is no longer subsidizing Desert Hills Waters. At the current time, not, not last year, but as we go.
As we go forward for fiscal year twenty twenty four. Desert Hills has a positive net operations of three hundred and thirty fourth, or proposed to have positive net operations of three hundred and thirty four thousand six eighty two. So that is correct.
Okay. And then that include, then that is net of the six hundred and thirty thousand dollar CIP too. So, so we are truly on the cash basis. We're in the blood.
Correct. Moving forward and we'll true up twenty two and twenty three. After fiscal year twenty three ends and we see where, where we actually end for twenty three. Any questions first? And then the last enterprise sheet that's in your packet is for the twenty twenty three with a loan fund. This is a new fund for fiscal year twenty four and it has the WIF a loan proceeds that we have taken forward to WIF a for listed in there of the thirteen million one ninety and the improvements for the Phoenix Interconnect Project appropriated in there as well for the thirteen million one ninety. Those funds have been established and set aside in a separate fund. It's a draw with the whip alone as a drawdown system. So this fund will allow us to properly track what expenses we have for this purpose. So we can accurately draw them down. So they've just been set aside separately. But for financial statement purposes, they will be included in with the Cape Creek Water Fund. Any questions on that?
Okay. Well, if we add for dusty. Since we're, since we're adding the additional columns, we're just, just trying to decide if we need to copy the whole thing over, but adding the column with the percent change. We'll have to copy this all over again for you for Thursday.
The entire packet?
Well, it's going to change the look of the pages because it'll have the proposed budget.
The estimated to propose change column and then the budget to budget.
Is that worth all the trees, Dusty?
It really is because you can't track the previous years unless you do that. And unfortunately, it's always like that. When you make your change in future years, you shouldn't have to do that.
So we'll add that column and then we'll make the other changes and, and we'll.
Does that conclude our presentation?
It does. It's like, how, how soon do you want to, can we hand these out to you and talk, are you going to remember the changes? We can go over the changes on Thursday.
I, I don't think we have any choice.
Yeah.
I mean, Monday to Thursday.
Yeah, I know. We gotta. We, we, we might have done by Wednesday. You could maybe pick them up, but we'll let you know. Cause that.
Just do your best. Yeah. Okay. You know, we'll have to, because we've already seen ninety eight percent.
Yeah, yeah.
In, in closing, I'd like to thank the three. So, oh, we have public comment. I, I forgot.
Mr. Arlen wanted to comment, but he left. I don't have any other.
Ron Silva.
Ron Silva, Cape Creek Town Core Resident. I want to thank you all for a very exciting and informative Monday night. I got three short comments to make. Number one is on the one percent sales tax, the budgeting one percent increase. Mr. Mayor, I think that makes sense for basically three reasons. Since we do not count a new business coming in as proposed, we don't start counting the sales tax on it until it's up and running during the fiscal year budget. And you have businesses that are going out of business in town. As an example, Oakes Pancake House. Vino and Panini, Brian's BBQ is leaving the tumbleweed, which had a minor sales tax outlaw Annie's, which is now Rebel Ranch. Local Johnny's is closing at two. They're not there in the evening. So that's a sales tax revenue we did have in the budget that we're not going to collect that. So I think it's important to keep that a conservative number. I could go two percent maybe, you know, but one percent I think is better or a low number than a higher number, be a five, six or seven. Now, the second reason is when you have high inflation, prices go up. Let's not forget that people may buy less as prices go up. So you're generally not going to be buying if you got a budget for food of a hundred dollars a week. Food goes up ten percent. You may not have the hundred and ten dollars. You're going to still spend a hundred dollars and get less for it. Second comment is basically on our staffing for the utility companies. Just an observation, why not make Cave Creek going a little bit out in left field, the gold standard as far as what we pay our people to get people here, better people, the best people and get them to stay. Most communities like Phoenix, Scottsdale, Peoria, Glendale attract people from all four directions. We do not get anybody from the north. There's nothing there, nothing to the east, very limited on the west. And it's from the south. So for somebody, an engineer or a well operator, sewer plant operator to come up here and interview. He's got to go through several towns. He's going to look at the time it takes him to get here. He's going to look at paying four dollars and fifty cents for a gallon of gas and say, wow, I'm only going to be even to, you know, where I'm at. And I think a lot of these people will go to a community that's closer to the home, save on gas and make more money, be happier, spend more time at home. Third, last item is the parking. Let's not forget. One of the reasons we have inadequate parking in town is my understanding is when I was on the council, we do not have in our ordinances, if a business adds a patio. They put tables and chairs out there. It attracts more customers. They're not going to be walking. They're not going to be on light rail. They're not going to take the bus up here. They're going to take a car. Where are they going to park? When we grant a building permit or an approval on a building, it's based on the use of the building and the square footage of it. You can add on two thousand feet of patio, put picnic tables out there, tables and chairs, and there's not one requirement for an additional parking spot. So. Talk about fixing an ordinance. That's one. Being on the plan commission, I, I'd like to get involved and change. It's, that's not going to solve the problem. It's going to prevent businesses from growing, thus reducing our sales tax revenue. So, but we're, we're part of the problem. Thank you.
David Phelps. Hi, everybody. David Phelps here, Cape Creek President. Thank you for your patience. Thanks for the conversation. It's been nice to hear contributions from everybody. I'd like to go to one of the issues that Ron was discussing as well. I think a, a good buy-in for an employee is where you live. And I would ask Sean to comment on, did the people that left our town as far as being their employer, did they live here? I would state to you that if we could identify parcel of land that could accommodate a half a dozen or eight single family residences where they would come to basically town employee housing that that incentive and we could have them pay a rent or have them pay some kind of under market amount. So they're, they're not paying what we would have to pay if we landed here, but they get to live here. That would be a benefit that we could create that gold standard. You can afford to live in Cave Creek. Because of what you do, who you serve and what the town is and would have to invest in would be employee housing. I know it sounds whacked out, but hey, whoever thought we're going to have twenty five million dollars in the bank? The other thing is I think we need to identify an open space element for the people that live south of Carefree Highway. I think they have long overdue been contributing, they contributed to our sales or property tax for Spur Cross Ranch. The amount of impact they can generally have on our trail system is, is not as much as those of us who live up here more north. I think they are owed a space that they could have possibly a small community center. A place that they could go to that would have shade, outdoor tables, maybe a little barbecue grill type thing. That's a safe place. It's only open during daylight hours. Maybe it even has a, a grassy spot. Who knows? But I think that would be a very nice equitable distribution that we could do for the people that live south of Carefree Highway. They've endured and created our economic engine down there that's filling these coffers. So thank you.
No additional speakers there is.
Oh, yes. This is from Bob Anderson. Yeah. He says, I propose that the town improve a one block stretch along the south side of Carefree Highway between fifty first street to fifty second street by constructing a pedestrian sidewalk separated from the street by raised curb. The residents walking from both Phoenix and Cave Creek sides of forty eighth street to the sprouts of the Starbucks developments. This is the only unimproved stretch that remains rough dirt, mud and weeds. I sent additional rationale, the email to the council and town staff. Turn that over to engineering.
Actually, it would be faster if I talked.
Sorry.
Be faster if I talked.
Okay.
We did confirm that all of the property on the south side is within the town limits. It would be curb and gutter with concrete. The estimated cost would be about a hundred thousand dollars. There's a culvert there that we have to put in along that area. On the north side of the road is yet to be developed and as that property develops and I don't know, the next year, year and a half, two years. Whoever develops that property would be required to put the pathway in on the north side and there would be access on the other intersection at potentially no cost to the town as it develops. So it's a delayed. You know, so solution at no cost to the town or cost of the town for it, if you do it on the south side.
And, and there's no, there's no town. I mean, we're right at the limit. I mean, right at the town limits. There's nobody living to the west of that to use it from the town. It's, it's all the church and.
Right. That's city of Phoenix.
Yeah, I, we're going to have to think about that, I think.
Okay. And if I could mention one more thing that I made a terrible faux pas that when we were putting this budget together, one of the things that the staff does is we work with one or two citizens from the community to review the budget before it comes to the council. And we worked with Mr. Mattingly and Adam White over the years. And this year, Mr. David Smith happened to be available. And he was very kind to come in and is very knowledgeable about the budget process and most of the projects in there. And he spent two different days with staff, hearing all of the department director. You know, proposals in their budget and then sat with Mitzi and I. So thank you very much, David.
Thank you, David. It's my turn. It's my turn. Well, I'd like to thank our three stalwarts for making it all the way to the end of this. I'd like to thank staff. I think it's it did a nice job. It's a really good start in the budget. We can tune this stuff up. It's it's really a gratifying to see how many the the lost the carefree customers, a new fire department. We're fixing the streets up and we still have money. So we just need to be frugal and spend it correctly. And like to thank staff for sticking with this till ten o'clock. The council is like to thank council for sticking with it. Of course, staff for sticking with it too. It's been a long day, but I think it's it's like a fruit canal kind of. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.